Hello, everybody. Welcome to our study session slash special council meeting. It is Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I'll ask Linda to do roll call and share announcements with the public.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Barber, present. Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Rash. Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
Okay. Information on participating in this meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on this meeting's agenda, which is online at monterey.gov/agendas. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak, and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you are connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In-person attendees must keep phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in the democratic process in your city government.
Thanks, Linda. And with that, we'll go ahead and go into our public appearance items. First, we have a receive a presentation and approve the 2025-26 City Council Action Items Schedule. With that, I'll pass it to our Assistant City Manager, Nat, for presentation.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, City Council. We're pleased today to provide you with an overview of the 2025 and 2026 City Council Action Item Schedule. With us this afternoon are all the department heads who represent the various areas of service delivery in our city, our Public Works Director, Fire Chief, Police Chief, and others, and here to answer any questions you have about the schedule. What I'll do this afternoon is walk through where we are today, how we got to developing and presenting this action item schedule, what that means, and then go through some of the examples of projects, programs, and initiatives that fall within each of the city council priority areas. And of course, we'll have time for Q and A as well. So first, what I'll do is share the screen here, and let's go back in time just a little bit. Earlier this year, city staff, we presented the city staff work program to all of you on January 21st. Following that, on the 28th, we held the prioritization and goal-setting workshop at Schulte Park Center. You may recall lots of engagement, feedback on what are the city's priorities. We had the very challenging prioritization exercise, what's most important and what's least important, and what items are the most urgent and the least urgent. And on March 24th, council reviewed summary of the workshop, feedback, received updates on some of the initiatives within the top eight priorities, and you all adopted those priorities by resolution. What some of the feedback we did here on March 4th is that it might be helpful for each and every one of you to learn a little bit more about when specific items are going to be brought to council for deliberation, or for a presentation, or action. So that's what we've done here in the three-page 11-by-17 sheet of initiatives here. So again, here's just a reminder of what we brought to you on January 21st, the council priorities that were adopted on the 4th of March, and then the schedule that we're bringing before you today. This graphic may look familiar to you. This is the import levels of importance and urgency based on the various city priorities, everything ranging from at the top, community engagement and government transparency, all the way through to other areas of service delivery as well. Okay, and you may recall this as well. This is the ranking of city priorities based on what's most important to all of you. And what we're going to do today is focus on these areas. It's not to say that other areas of city service delivery aren't important, but based on what you all identified as most important, and these are eight of them, that's what we're presenting to you today. So this is actually a slide from our council workshop back in fall of 2019, and some of you were on council during that time. We talked about how managing the agenda is also about managing priorities. The last several city council meetings, you've noticed we've gone past 11 o'clock at night, and what we do is try, we try our best on the staff side in cooperation with all of you to manage priorities accordingly. And this was the case back in 2019, and certainly the case today, that staff workload is at a very high capacity, at 100% or in some cases, more. And if we make changes to the priority list, it does mean that we have to reprioritize and identify what we take, might take off or readjust. And we appreciate your support of that. So also, a slide from the 2019 workshop, our best practices on agenda management, and part of that is making sure there is a clear understanding among council and staff about what's expected. You know, are we having an initial discussion, or are we looking for to do a deep dive on certain issues or topics? Also, planning for the right amount of time on any given agenda item, ensuring that stakeholders and the public are not only properly notified, but engaged through the process. We've heard, and we see, council is, finds community engagement and government transparency is a number-one priority above all else, and we keep that in mind when we bring items to you. And then, and then some of the feedback back at Schulte Park Center, many of you brought up the fact that as staff, we should be very candid and share with you if we have workload, staff workload, capacity challenges, and we'll do that before we add items to the agenda. And then, of course, having a consensus among city council before we add items to the agenda. So there's not one thing on this slide that we changed from 2019. It's a best practice. We do our best to follow that and bring you the highest-quality product so that you all can make important and informed decisions on behalf of the community. All right, let's go through the 2025 and 26 City Council Action Item Schedule. First off, these items that we've brought before you highlight initiatives that fall, again, within each of the city council's top eight priorities. And these initiatives are also guided by the city council's workshop and the feedback that you've shared with us in January, and then again in March, and of course, throughout, throughout the year. And the schedule also includes estimates of when items are expected to be brought back to council for either a consent action. So if you see a checkbox, it might be a consent action, might be a presentation. It could be a public hearing if legally required, or also a public appearance. And this is a lot to see on the screen, but, and I've got printouts that we'll share with you, but provides you with a glimpse of some of the topics based on the eight different priority areas and areas of emphasis here on the schedule, and we'll be sure to email this. We're not expecting you to read the fine print. There's a lot on this, but it's a mind map that helps give a visual of what the different priority areas are. One, on community engagement transparency. Two is public safety. Three, fiscal stewardship. Four, housing and homelessness services. Five, fiscal stewardship, economic development. Six, a quality workforce, making sure we attract and retain a quality workforce. Seven is infrastructure, maintaining, repairing, and replacing infrastructure. And number eight is housing, affordable housing and securing water sources. So we're going to go through each of these eight areas this afternoon. So this is a lot to read here on, on the sheet.
Excuse me, Nat?
Yes.
Could you make the screen that's presentation full screen so we don't have, we get that screen bigger?
You know, I think that's probably, oh, you know, I think we can. Linda, could you click the X-box there on the, on the monitor there? I think.
If you close the participants, you go to the top.
Yep, there we go.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but.
No, I appreciate it. It is very small. As we close that out, should help a little bit. There we go.
There we go.
Yeah, hopefully that helps a little bit. So just, again, feel free to digest that a little bit. What I'll do now is walk through how to read the schedule. We tried to keep it as simple as possible, but still share some information with you all. I think, Councilmember Garcia, you used the term Gantt chart at the last time we talked about that. So what we've tried to do is put a little bit of a light Gantt chart together here on the list. So what we have on the first column is the number, and that's just a reference point in terms of, well, first, we'll start with the priority area, right? So what's involved here, community engagement, and the screen here, fiscal stewardship, economic development, that's the priority area. What you have in the next column is lead department. We only listed one department that's serving as a lead for each effort. But as you all know, and members of the community might know, these efforts that we embark upon aren't just an effort that's just one department-driven. Every ordinance, every resolution, every agenda report is reviewed by our city attorney's office, as an example. Some of these initiatives cross departments, not only the fire department as lead, but also support for Parks and Rec when it comes to wildfire prevention, as an example. So, but we've only highlighted one department here, which one is the lead, taking on that leadership role. What we have in these quarters, Q1, 2, 3, and 4, for both 25 and 26 are based on calendar year. So Q1 2025 is January through March of 2025, and so on and so forth, as shown here on the slide. We have a reference number, and that's just a reference number. It's not, not that economic development strategy is priority number 69, it's just a reference point for you as we walk through. There's a description of the item, and then when you see a checkbox on this, it means that there's going to be council action, whether that's a presentation or an item that's on the consent calendar. Where you see there's a shaded box, it means that there's ongoing staff work that's taking place during that quarter. And then, if you see a checkbox with the shaded item, that means that that work is expected to be completed during that quarter. We're complete, scheduled to complete, scheduled to adopt, council action, along with completion of that item. And then, if you see a shaded box with no checkbox, it means that's an item that's an ongoing effort, right? We're not necessarily ready to share that with council. Maybe it's down the line, but it's an ongoing effort that we'll continue to embark upon. So, does anyone have questions about how to read the light Gantt chart that we've provided with you before we go into the specific items? Any questions? Okay. So just to keep in mind the factors that may affect the schedule, there may be additional staffing constraints that we run into. We often are given what we call unfunded mandates by the federal or state government. They have new legal requirements, so sometimes that shifts our priorities. But we've done our best to show as accurate of a timeline as possible here for you. Are, sometimes there's new assignments or tasks that shift the timelines, or emergencies or unexpected circumstances that also shift our schedule around a bit. So let's take a few moments to go through the, the schedule. And what I'll do here is maybe share the screen so that we can all see what the schedule looks like, and we can all follow along as we walk through some of these items and where we've, what we've prioritized. So let me, give me one moment while I minimize some screens here. All right. So the first one, and we'll start with the conducting the city council prioritization and goal-setting efforts. We do that every year. Obviously, this year, we started in January with the work program. We're bringing back this quarter, this action item schedule, and we plan to do this twice a year, as we typically do. As we go to item number two, implementation of the Spanish-language outreach engagement strategies, that's an ongoing effort, and, and that's important to us as we continue to reach out to our Spanish-language community. Gathering feedback for and adopting the old capital site master plan, that was a multi-year effort that just concluded with council action last week. Council adopted the increase to the city council compensation, so that, that continued as well, and was completed this quarter. Considering the city council governance policy on boards and commissions, that's currently on the agenda for today's meeting, and as an initial conversation, it'll have to come back to all of you for formal adoption later on, which is why we've listed both quarter one, I'm sorry, quarter two and quarter three of this year for this item, item number five. Later on this year, we plan to bring back the city council travel policy for your consideration. One of the key initiatives in community engagement that we're launching this year is our, what we're calling the First City Academy, and it's a new citizens academy program for residents. And it's a way for residents to learn about the different areas of service delivery that we have. Each department will have either one or share with another department head an evening session on, to learn about the services that we provide, learn about city government. We're really excited to be launching that program this August. And kudos to all the department heads for their support in this program. We're modeling it very much after the police department's citizens academy as well. One of the other efforts we're launching this year will be our twice-a-year City Hall in Your Corner. It's a neighborhood services fair that is going to be going to various neighborhoods, and we'll announce the dates soon. But one will be in August, another one in September, and it's a way to bring together all the various city departments so that residents can have a chance to meet their police officers or firefighters, the recreation professionals, borrow a book from the bookmobile, and learn all about city government through the event that we're calling City Hall in Your Corner. We're also going to be completing engagement efforts on a grant that we're pursuing this year, which is the Land and Water Conservation Fund that will help support the revitalization and renovation of Jack's Park downtown. This year, we're also launching in a few months, a new, freshly updated, updated city website. And also, later on in the year, we're going to be integrating the Have Your State Monterey platform with our city website, rather than continuing to use the separate software that costs more, more dollars, more public dollars.
Hey, Nat?
Yeah.
And council, feel free to jump in if you have questions along the way here. It might be easier as we're going through.
Yep, absolutely.
I had a question on this one.
Please, please go ahead.
What does the process look like to get feedback and input on what the updated website looks like before we actually do the updates so that there's feedback from the public and the council on, on how we might be able to get something that's more user-friendly?
Yeah, I think historically, what we've done is, we've taken the, more of a implement the website based on best practices, what we've seen in other communities' approach. To be completely candid, our past three redesigns have been done and have been driven by staff that have had feedback over, over the years through one-on-one conversations. We haven't, and candidly, haven't budgeted for a deep engagement process on website redesign with either council or the community. We've, we're actually at about 95% completion and ready to launch. We can make changes after if there's feedback that folks would like to see different tools, but definitely the, the website is one that historically, and we have planned this year to, to launch and unveil, and perhaps share with council when we launch, not, not early in the process.
Okay. I just think it might be helpful, especially if we're investing money and updating the website, that we've done some solicitation from users. I, I mean, I'll share from my experience, and no knock to anybody on the team or, or the consultants that have been helping us with it, but I found that the website isn't super user-friendly. It's kind of hard to navigate and figure out, and I use it quite regularly. So I think it would be helpful if there is some kind of maybe soft launch where, where folks have the opportunity to interact with it and provide feedback in regards to their experience with it, to make sure that it's, it's user-friendly.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. We can build, build that in and maybe look at us, as you said, Mayor, on, yeah, soft launch, if you will. This is, we're using the same system, the same, what's, what's called content management. This is, we're using the same system, the same what's, what's called Content Management System, CMS. So it's not like we went through a whole RFP process and we're paying a significant amount of money. Every, as part of this contract, every three years, we get an updated refresh, if you will. So it's not a complete redesign, it's more of a refresh, if you will. But we appreciate the feedback and we'll continue to get some engagement on that. Maybe even have the website has the ability to have pop-ups. So when we have emergencies, for example, folks can see the alert. And then we can even have one that says, give us your feedback, where they fill out a survey, and then we can make adjustments along the way.
Thank you.
Yep, great.
And I would say just while we're on it, because I know that the next one is kind of similar to this. And I would say, similar to the website, as we get the app going, which I'm excited to see be rolled out, how, how we're receiving feedback and input from the public to optimize user experience.
That's right. And that's very important to us is optimizing that user experience. Right now, we have different avenues for citizens to submit requests, whether that's a pothole or other questions about city services, ADA request. Having this MyMontereyGov citizen request app is going to be very important and a helpful tool. We'll have it both not only on the Apple App Store, but also on the Google Play Store as well.
Awesome. Thanks for it.
And we'll have a presentation. Our information, information services manager, our chief information officer, rather, Angie Blake, will actually deliver a presentation to all of you when we launch so that you can download it. We can do a live demo, and all of you can learn about it, and then we can spread the word about the new. And we're also planning to later this year, launch a bilingual national community survey for feedback on services and priorities. So several hundred municipalities throughout the country use what's called the NCS survey, the National Community Survey. It's a proprietary product of a company called Polco. They're based in Colorado, and they issue a survey that goes out to residents, and it takes a statistically valid sample of mailers that go out to residents. We get the feedback, and there's a report. There's also not only the mailing component of the survey, but also the online piece. And so some of that data gets, gets tabulated, and then we'll present that feedback to council. This will be very helpful, especially as we have conversations over the next several months on what are the council priority areas when we look at our $10 million fiscal deficit, the structural deficit that we're in and identifying what is most important to the community. This survey, it will be a helpful tool because it'll not only give us an idea of what's important to the community, but also how do they rank city services? And we can have a clear view and a clearer picture of that, not only with the responses on the questions, but also benchmarking, how do we compare to other cities nationwide? So we're looking forward to launching that later this year as well. We're going to be continuing rec programming, recreation programming in neighborhoods, in neighborhoods such as Villa Del Monte, Laguna Grande as well. One of the programs that this year, the city hall in your corner, will be at Montecito Park in conjunction with a STEAM event, the Science Technology Engineering Arts and Math event that the library department and the recreation division are putting on. So we'll actually bring other departments together for that event. It's just one example. We'll be gathering feedback on an updated tree ordinance that will, tree ordinance that will be later on in the year, and we hope to bring an ordinance to all of you in early 2026. Yes.
Could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So the inference that I'm getting is that you'll create, I.
We have a friend joining us here.
It's starting to become a regular thing.
That there will be a tree ordinance draft suggested. And I, I am, I'm wondering if we can have a study session so beforehand, so that the whole community can give their feedback. This was District Three's huge priority slash fire safety.
We, we can.
Yeah, I'll second that. I mean, I've had conversations with Hans about this, and the idea is to solicit feedback and input. And I would hate for us to try to move somewhere down the field around presenting something to the public without having incorporated their feedback into that process initially. So it might be helpful to do something where it's, where are we currently at? Maybe some ideas around what it looks like moving forward, but really creating a space to hear from the public and then agendize something from there.
Or then staff develops a draft that then comes back to us, what, in 20, in, I think it was quarter one of 2026. Then we do it again from the draft.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rash. That's, that's very helpful feedback from all of you and helpful feedback on how to gather feedback on the tree ordinance. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I think it's got citywide implications. I think every, every district, every street wants to know and contribute ideas.
Probably everyone's number one.
You know, and of course, fire, the fire concern comes into that. So that, that becomes, you know, the driving force between, you know, what our ordinance is now that needs to be updated and, and what can we statutorily do? And pre USA is a pretty significant piece that we need to understand, the community needs to understand that. So that'll be important to incorporate that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Part of how I envisioned this working is that we have a little bit of a back and forth dialogue and look at how do we add, remove things, move things around. And I understand that there's some staticness to, to the list that's provided. But I almost wonder if we can use this as an opportunity to add a new number 13 into the fold and just kind of specifically articulate a tree town hall or listening session or, or something along those lines. And to me, having something in quarter three would be a good goal for that. Doesn't seem like too heavy of a lift to create a space to talk about what's currently in place and then hear what people's feedback is. And then that will prepare us for quarter one. I mean, I would love to see that moved up if at all possible. But I understand, I mean, it would be great to have that conversation as we're going into the next storm season, so.
I second, totally.
Yeah.
That's helpful feedback, and what we'll do is regroup with our parks team, who's led by Ty Snorden. And I know right now they're working on a number of efforts that are intended to reduce the fuel reduction. They did a lot of work last week on Old Monterey High, Old Monterey's Linus Highway and other areas. And we'll see how soon we can bring, have that engagement. But good feedback on study session, getting, getting feedback before we start presenting ordinance to council.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. And we're also planning on bringing forward a public art policy to all of you and beginning that work in quarter four of this year and then into 2026. And then also, part of that, again, another library and museums effort is completing the Monterey Public Library Strategic Plan. And that work will involve quite heavily the Board of Library Trustees as well.
Great.
A couple of thoughts. I, I know we have a lot going on, but if there's a way for us to move up the discussion around public art policy, I know that there's been some discussion with NCIP around trying to support more murals in the city. And in as much as, I, I don't imagine that it's too heavy of a lift to put something together for that. So if it's possible for us to move that up, and that would allow us to go into the new year with allowing murals to move forward. I know that the Arts Council has also approached Hans and I about having funding in artists that are wanting to move forward with murals, but having some issues as it relates to working with staff using the sign ordinance to consider those, even though there's not really a sign associated with them. So anyways, I think it'd be great to move that up if at all possible. And then just a few other things on the topic of community engagement and government transparency. So one of the things that, and I brought this up during the, the strategic planning discussion. I think that it'd be great to have a broader conversation around governance in general. One of the things that I, I brought up was the term limits for the boards, commissions, and committees. So would love to have that discussion at some point. And then one of the other things I brought up was a volunteer program, just as another way to engage the community and like activate folks that have the time, willingness, capacity, maybe college students that need to get service credit, creating a great opportunity to transition them into future workforce members and helping with capacity with all the various needs that exist within the city. So it'd be great to bring that item back. And then the last thing I'll bring up on this item is, I think it'd be great to just have a, maybe a study session on community engagement in general, and have presented to the council and the public around what are our current strategies as it relates to community engagement? I know Gino and I spent a lot of time trying to work with city manager's office on trying to refine and, and move that forward. And I feel like we kind of got a little bit stuck in the mud, if you will, on what that looks like. But I think how can we be creative moving forward around making sure that we're engaging folks in the community that tend not to be engaged, certain groups that their, their voice is as important as, as those that are engaged? So I think that would be a good thing to add.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, please. And I know anything that we add to staff, we have to be cognizant of the fact that if we're creating new work plans and it's staffing it, it does fall into the area of the city manager needs to designate, the timing, the personnel, making all those choices. But I just want to be careful and not start loading up at a time when we should be reflective of the fact that we are moving into a period of deficits with large expenditures, and money is going to be tight. And we just, the last couple of weeks, directed our city attorney, our city manager to come back with ideas of where we believe we could trim costs. And what that means is operating cost, probably personnel costs, and that might be staff. So I just want to make sure that we're balancing the fact that we may be going down a path where we're trying to cut costs. And that means we have to be especially careful about what additional demands we're expecting the city manager to execute.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think the volunteer program in particular, I think, could be helpful towards finding that right balance there, right? Because if we're trying to do more with less staff, how can we engage the community in a way that helps us achieve some of those goals? So none of these are a must do or have, has to do.
I understand.
And I, and I'm absolutely mindful of the cost associated with it.
And, and it's our time to express, you know, what we're, what are our priorities? But I just would say that, that every one of the priorities comes with a cost, even of all, even running a volunteer program, which I did, and we formerly had a full-time employee in the city. Well, we ran a very robust voluntary program, but had a cost. That, that is personnel that has to run that. They have to recruit, they have to train, they have to run it, they have to assign. So it's a, it's a big lift.
Yeah.
But certainly some, some goals down the road to talk about.
Yeah.
Are you done, Mr. Mayor?
Please, yep.
So I think this is the best place to bring this up, Nat, and that's when I put forth my suggestions under the governance ordinance for agendized item. It included the discussion to consider a smoking ban in the multi-unit apartments, multi-unit buildings. Where is that on this and?
Right now, this, that item specifically is not on the sheet. We can certainly have, have that conversation. One of the challenges with that specific initiative is that it requires quite a heavy lift on the community development side. And we're going to get to community development and then maybe get, and kind of share some of the challenges we're having right now in the planning office in particular, when it comes to keeping up with the state mandates, to be quite, to be quite honest. So we can, we can certainly talk about that and.
I, I hear that. Just a reminder that it had my support for discussing, Ed's support, and I, as I recollect the mayor's. So I think there was a lot of interest, a lot of interest from the public. And being that it's a public health, major issue for health, I'd like, I'd like to see it on there. I, I thought that was kind of a done deal, that it would get put onto the schedule for discussion sometime, you know, in the next year or nine months or.
So I had that on my list as well. And, and, and I kind of just want to loop back around to the point that, that Ed was making. I think the council should feel comfortable in sharing, this is the time to do it. Because if you're going to say something later on, it's going to make it hard, harder on staff in the council to figure that out. And so this isn't to say that we're going to do everything, but I think we have to be able to vocalize and then have that conversation with staff around what this looks like. And what I imagine, because I don't think we're going to get through figuring this out all today. But what I would say is maybe staff takes the feedback, sees how we can incorporate it, and then we can have it come back at a later date so that we can look at where things settle.
That sounds great, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Rash, for bringing it up. I mean, I know it's, this is an important topic that we've been brought up over the years. And, you know, as someone who suffers from asthma myself, where I understand, you know, how important it is to have policies that support restricting or limiting smoking in multifamily housing units. What would be helpful on the staff side for us is to understand if that is the priority that we want to get done this year. Is there something that community development is doing that we can maybe postpone or move off the list so that they have the staff capacity to be able to achieve that goal? And if you have any insights on items as we go through, and we, this is why we have the time today to go through the list, items that say, you know what, this is on the list, we see that you have it for this year, but really it could be something that we push to 2026. That'll be very helpful because all we want to do on the staff side is meet your expectations with the resources that we have.
Please.
So what I'm understanding, if I'm understanding correctly, is this is kind of like a jumping off point where we, we began, so to speak, as a draft, to know how to be able to modify when we need it and, and still keep it in consideration of if we modify it, that we are basically exchanging, if you will, and knowing what we're delaying to be able to move forward with something else. But this is a place where we can begin and then kind of move forward with some of the different things that my colleagues are talking about.
That's absolutely correct, Dr. Barber. And I think for us, we've done our best to map out what the next two years looks like, or at least we're in quarter two, so the next six quarters, what that, what that looks like, absolutely. And if, you know, we, we had the slide earlier that showed some of the challenges, what might affect the timeline. And as, as you stated, if there is something that you don't see on the list that you like to, like to see, it would be helpful to understand what we can take off to exchange for it. Or, you know, even though we try to make, make that work.
That's right. So the approval or disapproval of however it goes, if, if it's approved, because I'm, I'm understanding it's presentation and approval, then that's not a total commitment to Q1, Q2, 2025, these different pieces being exactly where they are if we're having other things to come back to us that may get changed. Is that correct?
That, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to move on to the next priority area, this public safety? So this is police, fire, emergency management, and code compliance. So item 17, adopt the firearms and ammunition's sales ordinance. That one is being led by community development and was brought to you and is expected to be brought back in the fourth quarter of this year. We also are very much focused on more training on active shooter incident management, also known as ASIM, training for our staff and for our region. We wish this wasn't something that we had to emphasize, quite frankly, but, but we need to be prepared for active shooter incidents. And very, we're very excited that our Monterey Police Department is leading. And very, we're very excited that our Monterey Police Department is leading a regional effort to implement. Nationally accredited and well-known training for staff.
Can I just ask a clarified question?
Sure.
Check, the checkbox.
Yes.
Means that there's some kind of action that's required by the council, correct?
Yes, we typically, typically that's the case, yes. And in this case, we may have an update from our police department on this item to share with council.
Thank you.
It's not necessarily for you to approve the training, but where our intent is to provide you with some more information on what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the next one here, and City of Carmel by the Sea approved the City of Monterey to serve as the ambulance service provider. For, for Carmel, as some of you know, City of Carmel by the Sea has for many years operated its own ambulance service. And their team currently is very unique, the ambulance service providers, the medics on those ambulance rigs. They're City of Carmel employees, but we manage the training, we provide oversight and guidance as EMS provider. And this agreement, if approved by council, are all of you, would fold the fire. Carmel by the Sea Fire Department, which is, which is our fire department, their ambulance service employees into our city workforce. And so we'll have some more information to share. That's just a general overview. But that's, that'll be coming before you in the next few months here, very soon.
So next few months, but it's identified as quarter two.
Correct, correct. Actually, it's planning on, I think it was a June, Chief, can you help me? Second meeting in June, so next, next month.
Awesome.
So it'll still be in quarter two. Yep. And then we're making some technology upgrades to the Emergency Operations Center. The EOC is an important facility for us when we have any emergency, whether that's an earthquake or tsunami. And we're upgrading the technology in there and that'll be completed in the next month. We're also replacing the mobile data terminals, also known as the MDTs for all police vehicles. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I apologize. On the Emergency Operations Center. Are the updates that we're doing there urgent? Like, are they absolutely necessary? And the reason why I ask this is because if we're having conversations around. Investing in updating the public safety facility. I guess I just, I'm hesitant to want, I'm, of course, hypersensitive to the need for safety in our community. But I also want to make sure that we're balancing that conversation with appropriately allocating funding. Given the fiscal situation that we're in.
Yeah, no, and it's a great policy question, Mr. Mayor. I think for us, the upgrades to the EOC are generally pretty basic. We're upgrading televisions and the monitors, some of the technology in there so that it can be more conducive, not only for the emergency operations, but also for training. Which is used every week by the fire department and the police department. So a lot of the technology in there, if we, in the future, build a new public safety facility. We can take that equipment and translate it over, transfer it over to a new site. So it is more urgent, we have funding for it. I think some of the dollars are NCIP dollars that were appropriated two years ago or multiple, a few years ago to the site. So we're, this project is scheduled for completion in about three weeks. But I appreciate the comment because we, we understand, we don't want to be making major investments in facilities that we're going to tear down. And an update in the next few years.
Yeah, and I, I sympathize with the feeling, but it's, it's like you've got to, you got to hold the roof open and up while you're hustling around under the roof. And you're also 24/7, 365 days a year in public safety. So there's never a time that it goes down.
That's right.
It's always, always live while new construction's going on, which presents a dilemma when we're talking about. Navigating a major remodel of the Public Safety Center. But the EOC is on the backside, so much easier component to manage because it's a separate building, it's a newer building. And it's accessible. So I can envision that when there, when there is an upgrade that comes, that that, that would probably be touched. But it's probably not the very first priority of that building. There are a lot of other places that I know that are way more important than the EOC because the EOC is pre-functional.
Yep.
And relatively newer compared to everything else that is basically not. And overcrowded and I hate to use the word dysfunctional, it's the building that's dysfunctional, the people are fabulous.
That's right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, absolutely.
Are the TVs already ordered?
Yep, TV, everything's been ordered, they're affordable, you know, prices have gone down, this was the right, right time to do it. And it really does provide our, our police crews and fire crews. And when we activate EOC with more screens and monitors that allow us to have a better situational awareness of what's going on. So we can hook some up to the new tablet command system that fire has. We can pull up weather maps from the National Weather Service, much more functionality than the current projector and few monitors that we have. That are small and very old technologies. So we've, we're doing this on a very frugally, let's put, put it that way with, you know, TVs that we're buying from Costco, not. Expensive provider. Yeah.
All right.
All right. We're also, I mentioned the tablet command, mobile incident command and response platform. Part of that's been rolled out to most of our mobile. You know, the fire trucks and fire engines and at each fire station. With our move from Verizon over to the FirstNet network. We should be able to complete that by end of third quarter this year. So, and we're getting new iPads for everyone as well, for all the new devices. It's great technology, we're happy to show, tell you more about the tablet command system. If you're interested, we've got adopting the sidewalk vending ordinance, that'll be brought back to council as well. By third quarter, we council, you all know, this is annual, and what you see here in red are legally required items that. So that's kind of the differential here when you see text in red. The AB 481 report and automated license plate readers report for police. We bring that to council for approval in, during the second quarter of each year. So those, that's why you have those two check marks. We'll be bringing forward an update to the general plan fire hazard map as well. And managing the existing CAL FIRE fuel reduction grant and will always continue to reapply for additional funding. That's very important to us. We're going to implement a life spot active shooter safety response system in police. This will help us map various city facilities and public facilities. So that if there is an active shooter training, our police officers have a better picture of what they're going into and where all the exits are. And better situational awareness in the case of an active shooter incident.
So I was going to make a comment about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad that that's come to the technology. Point where, where it's, it's also required, it's statutory now. And it's also at a point where I'd say 10 years ago in its infancy. I was helping the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. And we were, we were looking at the infrastructure that was available for the technology link. And it just was not prepared. It was totally reliant on new infrastructure that was new design, wasn't ready. But I think it's at a much further along technology place that will serve public safety very well. So I'm glad that it's got some statutory teeth to it as well. And there's probably going to be some additional funding for that as well, coming out of the state of California. And that's one of the items that when I served for this council on the public safety. Subcommittee for Lead California Cities, that was one of the topics that, that was vibrantly discussed. And we were able to grab some legislative support. And so that was, that's been something that Sacramento has talked about at the Lead California Cities Public Safety Subcommittee for quite a while.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Smith. Yep. We also are working towards exploring a fire services joint powers authority. Or this is the JPA for fire service that started back in 2008 and took a long pause. The discussion is coming back and looking at implementing this, or at least beginning a conversation on what a feasibility study. Or implementation plan might look like, where we would join Carmel and Pacific Grove for a more regional approach to fire service. We have a great and incredible fire department that has the not only administration and operations and training programs in place. The next step is how can we, how can we look at that and regionalize that where we can all benefit from it? Maybe even beyond the current model, which is contracted services through the city.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share with the public. And I'm, I'm sharing this now because it would be helpful to get any public feedback or input as it relates to this item specifically. So this has been part of our fire department strategic plan for some time now. It seems like a natural, good step to roll into with our current fire contract that we have to increase efficiency, cost savings. I've had a meeting with the mayors of Carmel and MPG on this item. Everybody around the table seems enthusiastic about moving forward to the next step in the conversation. Which led to a meeting that actually happened this afternoon with the mayors and the city managers and, and fire department. And so I think we're, we're all on board moving forward with the next step, which. And I want to make sure I get this right. It's not a feasibility, how am I?
More of an implementation plan, if you will.
To look at what that governance model looks like to move forward with that. So would love any feedback or input that folks in the public have as it relates to making that transition. But we're excited, we're excited for it to help create efficiencies within local government, so.
Thank you, yeah, looking forward to restarting that conversation for sure. The item 29, implement the advanced life support ALS program. And many of you know, and I hear the story very often, more and more, we're first on the scene, our fire department, first on the scene to provide. The EMS services to those who are suffering from a medical incident. And we're there before AMR, the ambulance company provider here in the city of Monterey. And so implementing the ALS program will be crucial and that will be an ongoing effort. Next, planning for improved fire services along the Highway 68 corridor in collaboration with our partners. We have a number of strategies that are in the fire, irons in the fire, if you will, that are looking at how do we fund and sustain? Not only the building of a new fire station along the 68 corridor. But also maintaining and funding its ongoing operation. Right now, the Highway 68 corridor is served during the day. If we're lucky to have that, that fire service, the temporary station right off of Fred Kane Drive at the airport. And then, but at night, other stations have to respond. So we've, we're trying to find a solution to better serve the 68 corridor, which includes Fisherman's Flats, Deer Flats, Ryan Ranch in Monterey. But also some of the other areas outside of the City of Monterey jurisdiction that include Cypress. Fire Protection District's territory or Monterey County Regional's territory, such as Montero or Tarpe Flats. So that's part of that conversation and it will require continued collaboration with our partners. Fire Chief Andrew Miller is leading that effort. We're also looking at a long-term fire apparatus funding and replacement plan as well. And that's something that will be developed in 2026. Any questions on public safety? Any other ones? All right, we'll go on to the next topic, fiscal stewardship, and this is stabilizing future revenue sources. So items 32 through 38, these are the ongoing efforts that you see throughout the year. Next week, we'll be presenting to all of you a proposed budget for fiscal year 25, 26 for adoption. Along with a salary schedule, we always bring the mid-year budget to all of you in January, February. And so that's what you have here, items 32 through 38. We also check in with council regularly on the strategy to fund the Section 115 trust. This is the pension liability trust. And then also on the docket is having a pension reserve and long-range strategic plan. We're also embarking.
On that one?
Yeah.
Is the long range, is it a pension reserve or is it pension and reserve? And long range strategic plan, just trying to make sure I read this correctly.
Thanks for catching that typo. Yes, it's a pension and reserve long-range plan, not, we'll fix that typo.
So, so we're, we're speaking to in this item, looking at things like our. My brain.
What's the long-range plan for funding and addressing pension liability is?
So specific pension?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and our pension reserve that we currently have.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, and this was based on feedback from all of you when we had the presentations earlier in the year from the two consultants. On our Section 115 trust. How do we sustain it? How do we ensure that we maximize on those reserves long-term?
So while I'm on the topic, and I know it's, maybe I'm, and if I'm missing it on here, I apologize. But the, our reserve policy was something that we also talked about and updating that from being a certain dollar amount to perhaps a percentage or whatever that updated model looks like. So I think it would be good to include that on there as well.
Thank you. The conversation we had, starting a couple of months ago, identifying and implementing solutions to address the city's structural deficit, that will continue. That'll be a very important work program item for council over the next couple of years here. Also updating our master fee schedule, that's item 42. And then time for me to scroll here, hang on one second. And then. As we continue down the list, the city-wide comprehensive fee and rate study also. There's also, we talked about recently considering the renewal of the Measure PNS 1% sales tax measure. Assessing and implementing infrastructure financing options, continuing to secure federal and state grants where feasible. Continuing to implement credit card fees for online payments. Those are all important parts of all efforts led by finance.
Please, yeah. Nat, is there a place here for Measure G as well, for the renewal of Measure G?
Absolutely, we can add that.
Because I think we had just discussed that a couple of weeks ago. As we were looking at long-term options and what else is coming, Measure G was on there. And there was also the discussion of that small sliver of what's remaining in the state limit on sales tax.
The 0.375%.
Incorporate that into the Measure G conversation.
Perfect. And a lot of that goes to, I appreciate you calling that out, Councilmember Smith specifically, because it's helpful. When we talk about assessing and implementing infrastructure financing options, similar to the discussion we had last week. We'll continue to incorporate that and explore that further, those specific efforts, along with other financing and revenue generating mechanisms.
Nat, I would love for you to add on the vacancy tax issue on infrastructure financing options. I think we had to touch on that again.
Appreciate that. Vacancy tax slash property transfer.
Yes. Yes.
Absolutely, thank you. Completing and implementing changes based on the general plan fee analysis, that'll be one that we'll bring back to all of you later this year. And Kim, if you're interested in learning more, Kim Cole, our community development director, can provide some more background on that as well. Considering amendments to the Mills Act policies, we'll bring that forward to you. Updates to financial policies, a major initiative this year and one of the reasons why we are asking for additional staffing resources that we'll discuss next week. Is implementation of a new enterprise resource planning system. And this serves as the finance and HR backbone for the city. Item number 52 is selecting new external auditors. That'll not only be council action. In June, but also ongoing implementation even after council approves action. We'll be selecting a new audit firm, there's banking service selection. So we currently have Wells Fargo as our banking and merchant services provider. And it's time for us to go through a new RFP process to identify a new banking service provider. Conducting a study in adopting stormwater fees, that is going to be brought before you in 2026. Along with an updated residential. along with an updated residential parking program. And then considering increasing the parks and rec facility maintenance fund allocation. One of the other efforts later this year and into 2026, we hope to accept credit cards and advanced reservation options for the Vets Park campground. So for many years, for decades, actually, we accept, we don't accept reservations at the campground, it's on a first come, first served basis, which is great for the region because there aren't very many places where people can go camping. And being able to walk up and grab a spot on a first come, first served basis is very helpful for visitors to Monterey. Unfortunately, the downside is not too many people pack up their bags and plan a vacation based on not having a reservation at a campground. So being able to take advanced reservation will help optimize reservations so that we can, might even get into the 90th to 100th percentile of reservation capacity, especially during the off-peak season. Right now, summertime, the campground's almost 100% booked, especially on weekends and holidays. It's during that off-season, the shoulder season, spring and fall, where we might be able to get, receive more revenue. And that's one of the reasons why this item specifically is under fiscal stewardship and revenue source.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep. And then we also plan to bring the retail cannabis policy to council in the new year as well, just an update. Okay, are we ready to go on to housing and homelessness services?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm not sure what category it would be in, but that's the status of working with Caltrans on a safety study for highway 68 skyline.
All right.
So I know that we've talked about that, I know that there's been correspondence, but it's not on here where I can find it. But if, if we have a place, we should put it. I think it's something that we're going to actually bring to council and we're going to be having to take some action on that. So just wondering where it is.
Great, great question. And this is when I will phone a friend and ask our Public Works Director Andrea Reni to provide a brief update here at the podium, if she's here.
She's here.
Oh, okay, this is another Dave Huber moment where I turn, oh, there she is, she's in the back. So.
It's not only just phone a friend, it's phone an expert.
That's right, phone an expert, that's right.
Sure about that. So can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah, just wondering about where the item of Skyline Forest and Highway 68, the safety and the ask that the council agreed, directing city manager to see what we can do about working with Caltrans to have some type of a safety study.
Thank you. And we did have a meeting with Caltrans and we do have money in a budget for professional services. So after July 1st, we can award, actually give our consultants a work order to do that very initial level study. One, we call it like the pre, what it used to be called the ICE intersection control evaluation. So we were waiting for the budget so that we could have the professional services money in order to do that. So we can get started after July 1st.
And so since this is council action, maybe after budget, then that would go on to this somewhere. Because then we would know it'd be scheduled for it coming back to the city council as a report of what potential options there would be.
As a presentation, yes. With the results.
I see this as really very helpful for the council to chart out all those things we promised to the community, where we can keep track of stuff. And I think that's an important place. So when it's the appropriate time, I think that one added would be very helpful.
Okay.
I just wanted to add one additional element, I think Tom Rowley's comments, feedback as it relates to annexation of county land. I don't see that as, as the biggest priority, but I think it's something worth discussing. I mean, when we're talking about, you know, those unincorporated areas that are utilizing our services, our fire services or otherwise. I think there's an argument to be made that we should be capturing some of that and having a little bit more control over those lands that are adjacent to Monterey.
Yeah. Thank you, Andrea, for answering that. And on the annexation piece, one of the reasons why we haven't prioritized it on the staff level is generally speaking, when it comes to annexations of property, it requires a negotiation with the county in terms of what percentage of property tax is the county willing to give up to give to the city for not providing that service or other taxing agencies. In the case of policing, it's the county with sheriff's office territory. In the case of the fire service, it's Monterey County Regional Fire District. And I can assure that in most cases, annexation is more of a burden than a benefit unless that negotiation goes well and the county is willing to give up more of its property tax revenues. So definitely something we want to explore, Mr. Mayor. I think it's an important one to have that, have that conversation in terms of of the priority in all the items that are on the list for securing future revenue sources. It's one that has a number of hurdles and we can, of course, share more background on that, how that negotiation process works, what agencies would be part of that discussion and whether it would be cost-effective for us to annex or perhaps, perhaps not. And maybe seeking, in the case of the fire station, more of an agreement to how those entities can cost-share in the operations of a fire station that maybe we operate. So those are good, good points.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And actually, you've, you've identified something that I've been holding back on until we got through the budget process and actually had some conversations with the city manager. And the approach is to, I mean, we have, we have a lot going on on highway 68. And obviously with the airport changes, the Transportation Authority Monterey County moving ahead with environmental impact report, the study right now for three roundabouts on highway 68. So significant attention with RENA and the county's lack of having a housing plan and building remedy. So there are a lot of moving parts and all that. So I don't know if it's a, a study session or we ask staff to kind of give us a rundown and educate us of if we were thinking we wanted to talk about an annex, educate us in terms of the things to consider. And, and I think my first ask would be, can you educate us on the funding sources when it comes to property tax and what does that impact us on an area hypothetically like highway 68 for the future? So I think that would be the ask that I would have as district two, since it's in district two, I've had significant conversations with both fish flats and deer flats. It's on the horizon, but I concur, we need, we need to know more about what our options may be.
Yeah, and that RENA conversation is a big piece of it as well. I mean, we would probably end up acquiring those, that RENA allocation for whatever ends up in their, I mean, I imagine the time we get around talking to this, that the county would probably be further along in getting their plan certified by the state and.
We might be in cycle nine, which is only eight years away. And one option is that maybe you don't go in and try and do that process until there are actually properties there to annex. And so there's, there's a lot to think about what the timing of most, most annexations occur after there's already a identified gap in service and the city is better more aligned to inappropriate to provide that service to the residents that are already there. But we don't have any residents there yet. So there's, there's a lot of questions about process.
Nat, I have a comment and a question. Going back to highway 68 and skyline, about a couple of months ago, one of the planners for the transportation agency for Monterey County came to a bike and pet committee meeting and I, and I sit on that committee representing the city of Monterey. And she was specifically looking for feedback from all the committee members regarding areas in the county where they can pay attention to inform the Vision Zero plan that they're currently implementing. And so I made sure to share those concerns as well along highway 68 as it relates to our residents. So I know she took note of that. And I also shared a couple of other areas around the city of Monterey that are in, in county right away. So just wanted to share that. The question I have is about item number 56 in terms of the residential parking program. I see a lot of shaded cells there and a check mark for Q2 2026. What, where does that stand at the moment and why is the check mark into next year?
Yes, maybe I'll ask Andrea to come on up and provide some more guidance. I know we had our town hall meeting recently, we're looking to automate and utilize technology to implement the program. But specifics and timelines, Andrea?
So that's correct. We had our town hall on March 27th, so we got all of the feedback. Parking is working on a program. We also need a code, Monterey City Code Amendment to go with a new residential parking program. And so that means that we're working on it and then we'll bring it to council. And I'm sorry, I can't, what was, was the quarter on that one? I believe it's quarter three. Yeah. So that means we should bring it to council, probably I want to say fall of this year. But we're working on it and trying to get all the pieces and the city code also, we need to have amendments for the residential parking program. It's there, it's not a sticker, it would be based on license plates and I don't want to steal Christie's thunder coming in here. But there are a lot of new technology. And so we were testing it, we were making up like fake addresses and licenses and, and working out all the bugs. So that's what we're doing to make sure that it works. So it's a more straightforward system, it's easier for residents to use it.
So once, I guess a draft is ready, will, will there still be additional opportunities for community feedback or community input?
Yes.
Okay. All right, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilmembers, Garcia. All right, we're going to go to housing and homelessness services. And I know this is a, a shorter list, but we know that addressing homelessness is a priority for the council. But we also, I think, understand that we're not the lead service provider when it comes to homelessness services. We rely very heavily on nonprofit service providers, the county of Monterey and others. But homelessness-related topics include the homeless camping ordinance, implementing the, and evaluating the rental assistance program. That's part of the Housing Element Program 4B, appropriating funding for the permanent local housing allocation, also known as PLHA, completing the homeless shelter report that's required as part of Assembly Bill 362, continuing work in providing the multidisciplinary outreach team, also known as the MDOT team through the police department, and then continuing homeless encampment cleanups. For us, it's important that we provide services to those experiencing homelessness. And unfortunately, there are a number of individuals who are service resistant and, and that becomes the challenge for us. All right, any questions on that item?
I have a general question because I know that we're starting to get a little bit, and it's almost better suited for the housing, affordable housing and secure water sources. But I do note that there are some of the housing element items in this section, so I'll just, I'll bring it up now. Staff had shared with us the status of the different housing element programs. And I noticed that the, the timelines established for some of those are kind of, have already passed. And so I just kind of wanted to get a sense of what that looks like for us to try to get back on track and meeting those deadlines. That might be a question for Kim.
It is a question for Kim. And actually, when we get to the last item, the last priority, housing, affordable housing and secure water sources. Kim Cole, our community development director, will actually be the one to lead us through that detail.
Maybe we can wait for that time.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, economic development was another priority of, for all of you as part of the fiscal stewardship category. And item 66, adopting an ordinance on bike rentals in the C2 district. That was brought forward and council acted upon that. There are a number of other lease extensions or new leases that are, go before all of you in the community development department. And this specific initiative led by our property manager, Jana Aldretti. She does an outstanding job of managing all of our citywide leases. And that includes extensions that council approved this year for the Chamber of Commerce building that's currently occupied by the Chamber 353 Comino Elastero, 285 Figueroa Street, that's the beach house or beach station. And then other ones we've got later. Today, I believe we've got the Hyatt Regency Parking Area Lease. We have next week, a discussion in closed session about the former Lulu's Griddle in the Middle and what business the city is interested in negotiating with on that lease. There's a new lease also for 640 Wave Street that'll be coming forward later in the year as well. That's the former IMAX Theater. And then continuing upgrades to Fisherman's Wharf, that's item 76. The, the big effort, we had an entire study session earlier this year on was to adopt the economic development strategy. And we brought forward to all of you a draft strategy that we received very helpful feedback from all of you. And we'll continue to do, we are recommending next week as part of council's adoption of the budget and positions to approve the hiring of a new economic development manager that would help us be able to gather business and community feedback on that economic development strategy and go to council with adoption and approval of that study, or the strategy rather, in quarter one of 2026.
One of the things that I wanted to call out, excuse me, from that discussion was there seemed to be some strong support from the council on consideration of testing out or trying out what Alvarado Street pedestrian-only option looks like. So it would be nice to have that as a separate line item in that section.
Thank you. All right, and considering extending the expiration of the vesting tentative map approach in your plaza, that'll be brought forward to you very soon. And we went through the rest of the leases. So this is a new, you know, aside from the work that we do on property management with the city-owned leases, whether they're ground leases or building leases. Once we have the strategy, we're going to be folding in those ideas in whether that's the enhanced infrastructure financing district, which we've listed separately here as item 73, as well as looking into Alvarado Street and all the other great ideas and suggestions that you all brought forward. So looking forward to that. All right, infrastructure, maintaining, repairing and replacing, a lot of items here, item 77 through 113. We talked to all of you about completing a public engagement plan on next steps for Lower Presidio Historic Park. And that will ramp up in the next several months with a presentation to council at the end of the year. Brian Edwards, our library and museums director, will be leading that effort. And we're also continuing to consider the undergrounding approach, we'll talk about that some more. Council took action earlier this year. We have reviewing and adopting the cross-block policy. The local road safety plan is something council reviewed and approved this year, this month. Conducting a hearing on collection of the sewer service charges on the property tax roll. Also coming up is responding to, this is one example, item 82, of something that, that we didn't have planned earlier in the year, but happy to do so, is responding to the civil grand jury report on the condition of the wharves. And continuing to review the needs and identify funding for the wharves, that's items 81 and 83. Ongoing discussions on infrastructure financing options, that'll continue through the Q1 of 2026. Concerning the lease extension for the crematorium, that's on the agenda for the closed session today. Reviewing needs and identifying funding for the central public safety facility. Reviewing our state of the city's infrastructure, that's an annual report, item 87. The Sea Level Rise Study, that's item 88. We have upgrade to technology here in the city council chamber. That'll be done this year. We have delivering measure S projects, that's ongoing. Implementing the city's mobility plan, the citywide facility condition assessment. And then continuing design and implementation of the stormwater diversion to wastewater projects. Any questions on those so far as we keep going down the list?
I think it would be helpful to break down the stormwater one, if possible, into different elements, because I know that there's the. because I know that there's the the planning phase and then actual construction. So it might just be helpful to kind of have a better transparency in regards to what the pathway forward, but that looks like. And just for folks' awareness, that has to do with the connecting Lake El Estero, um, with Monterey One Water to provide additional uh, stormwater runoff, which if I recall correctly, would provide an additional a hundred acre feet minimum per year. So.
That's right. Yep. And then we have the, uh, the other project is the Olivier Street Stormwater Diversion Project as well. Yep. Uh, continuing to the Wharf one and Wharf two repair projects. It's item ninety four, the Wharf one fire suppression replacement project. One of the things we, uh, don't think about often, I've got the laptop connected to, uh, wifi, which is connected to our fiber infrastructure, is that our city's fiber infrastructure network, uh, does, uh, deteriorate and needs replacement. So, uh, that's a major effort. And, uh, that's an ongoing effort that, uh, will continue. That's item number ninety six. Um, also replacing the aging security and public safety camera infrastructure. So, uh, many of you, uh, may know that, uh, we have public safety camera infrastructure throughout the city, all of our parking garages, um, sports center. Uh, we have, uh, our city jail, uh, lease department, other locations and, uh, all of that infrastructure, the cameras themselves, the connections, um, all need to be updated. And, um, those are both on the list that, uh, you'll hear next week when we talk about budget. Um, those are, you know, optional, if you will. Um, we also have, uh, updating the rugged traffic network communications switches for traffic signals. That's, uh, on the list for next week's council meeting also. Seems to be quite a few items on the schedule for next week's council meeting. We also have, uh, grant applications for critical infrastructure. That'll continue. But the big challenge, and we've, uh, shared with all of you time and time again, is that grants continue to be more competitive. Uh, federal grant funding continues to be, uh, to dwindle. Uh, but we're going after every dollar that we possibly can. Uh, we are very lucky. We found out last week, we received support for a, what used to be known as earmarks. It's community funding. There's a fancy term for it now, now that earmarks are back.
Yeah.
But infrastructure, yeah, community infrastructure funding. So, um, Congressman Jimmy Panetta is, uh, is supporting that. Whether it gets approved by Congress is another story, but for initial repairs of our, uh, our wharves infrastructure. So, um, that's, uh, we're at least glad to have that support at, with our local representatives. We have, uh, legally required annual state compliance reports for sewers and stormwaters. Implementation of the ADA Transition Plan for Facilities and Rights of Way. Now that's legally required. We provided a update to council back in December. Continuing to deliver the NCIP projects.
Yeah, you might want to scroll.
Oh, thank you. Looking at the, this list, so I appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right. Um, facility improvements at Hilltop Park Center. Implementation of Laguna Grande Regional Park Trail Maintenance Strategy. And that's in collaboration with the Monterey Peninsula Regional Park District as well as the city of Seaside.
Hey, yeah.
I've got a question.
Sure.
And, and this may be for, um, a few of these apps, like the, uh, God bless you, the N, NCIP projects, delivery, um, I think even Hilltop, Laguna, uh, Grande and maybe all the way down to, uh, the stormwater project. Uh, no, all the way down to the, uh, cycling studio, uh, Monterey Sports Center. And then I guess it would pick up, uh, um, the update as well. I noticed with the shading being kind of, uh, where it's extended into twenty twenty six for some of them. And then some of them, um, don't start until twenty twenty six. Is that like where, uh, the range is when it's going to begin in? Or what is, what, uh, cause I know the shading is where you, where staff is continually working on it, but I'm just curious as to the projects being, um, at least initiated. And then I know a lot of times you can't say when it's going to be actually finished until you start the project that because of how construction, um, terms can go. But I'm just curious as to what's the timelines on these as far as looking at the shaded boxes, uh, when I see all of them colored, does that mean it's going to be twenty twenty seven? It's going to be, I mean, just kind of curious. And then how, if you go down a little further, of course, it looks like that one thirteen with the, um, Monterey Sports Center with the dressing rooms and locker rooms that wouldn't start until twenty twenty six is, if I'm reading it correctly.
You are absolutely reading it correctly, Dr. Barber, and thank you for, um, asking, uh, those questions. When you look at, uh, for example, item one oh four, implementation of the Laguna Grande Regional Park Trail Maintenance Strategy, that's an ongoing effort we know will continue into twenty twenty seven. And part of that is because of the permitting challenges and permitting issues. It's a lot of coordination with the other agencies, uh, that will continue in a phased approach over the next, uh, several years. Uh, when it comes to the sports center as a example, and you pointed this out, Councilmember Barber, what is that, uh, the dehumidifier replacement, uh, project and rehabilitating the auditorium and the pools, uh, that, uh, is, uh, is going to end here in, uh, this quarter and will continue to make final tweaks, uh, but, uh, that'll go through, uh, through Q four of this year. Um, we're really excited that the sports center pool will reopen on, I believe on, hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn, but Sunday is part of, uh, the, uh, sports center anniversary. So that's, that's, uh, very exciting. We invite everybody to attend and, and go. It's actually free admission to the sports center on, on Sunday. So, um, that project, uh, will, will happen. Uh, there's the cycling studio that's been relocated from upstairs to where the kids zone used to be. That'll open up for more programming upstairs. So these are just some examples of projects that allows us to maintain, repair or replace existing city infrastructure. And then when we look at, uh, as you observed, into twenty twenty six, the advanced integrated climate control system in the auditorium, that's going to actually help us reduce costs and improve energy efficiency so that we can more manually and using technology regulate the, uh, levels of humidity within the auditorium. One of the issues we had with the old dehumidifier is that number one, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't work as effectively. And so it would be very humid in, in, in the facility. So this is, uh, more, uh, using technology, the climate control system we're hoping to implement in, uh, twenty six. We're also hoping to update and renovate the locker rooms and dressing areas, uh, also. So that's how we've, uh, mapped out just for the next two years.
Okay. So some of these, as I was saying, that are shaded all the way through are actually going to the twenty twenty seven part of it.
That's right.
Okay.
Some of them are exactly.
But, but no, no deadline at this time.
No specific.
Like where would that?
Yeah, this is a, uh, general estimate. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I think we did cover, uh, I think all of it. The one, one piece, oh, the two, one ten is the rehabilitation of the Monterey Tennis Center to include new pickleball courts. We're looking forward to that as well. And also identifying a long-term strategy for Pacific Biological Laboratories. There's no funding for it, but we need to identify what that strategy looks like. Uh, there was just, uh, Brian led an effort to complete an assessment of how do we repurpose, reimagine PBL, the, the old, uh, Ed Ricketts Lab and perhaps allow for more, uh, joint pub, public and private use with potentially nonprofit partners on that facility. So that's a conversation that we would like to have, uh, end of this year into next year. Okay. Are we ready to go on to quality workforce? So attraction and retention of our workforce, let's, part of this is to continue the targeted recruitment efforts, including job placement and hiring. This becomes, uh, it continues to become a challenge, especially with certain professions that, uh, our city employs. That includes engineers as an example, where we find it very hard to, uh, to, to retain, uh, engineers, uh, just with keeping up with the private market and just the high cost of living. So this is where affordable housing and workforce attraction and retention go hand in hand. Uh, we do try to provide, um, competitive, uh, wages and that's an important part of, uh, of what we do through the labor agreements we have here with the seven bargaining units. Uh, that goes through twenty twenty seven, but we will start to have those conversations in quarter three and quarter four of twenty twenty six.
Now, if you can remember to scroll.
Nope. Thank you.
Yes.
Scrolling. There we go. And then, um, as part of that, we also, you know, we like to say it's easier and much more effective to grow employees from within and promote from within than to try to attract and find folks who don't already live on the peninsula. It's not only important for, uh, our attraction recruitment strategy, but it's also really important for our employees who do have a desire to grow in their profession and, and, uh, grow in the organization. So part of that is continuing our second year of our ongoing ONDA Academy, which is our employee development and leadership program for those who are supervisors. Uh, it's a program that we launch every or, or hold at least every other month, if not every month. And, uh, and that'll continue. Uh, we actually have a session on the fire department tomorrow with our ONDA Academy participants so they can learn about fire service delivery. Go ahead.
Just on the first one, on one fourteen, um, so, eh, in, in recruitment language, um, when we post a job online and we wait for folks to apply for it, it's called post and pray, which is a very antiquated strategy for recruitment. And I know that there's more effort than that going on within the city. Um, I, I, I was having, I can't remember who's having the conversation with, but around, uh, oh, I think it was Brett, um, around, um, working with the, uh, different department heads on the different associations for those types of jobs. But I just wonder how we can dig deeper into that strategy, particularly for the engineering positions. And when you were saying, uh, um, local talent, um, I just wonder where are the effort at? In as much as we need to focus on the now, I think it's also focusing on years out too. So how, what efforts are being made to have conversations with the high schoolers, um, that may be going away to go to college, um, but plan on coming back. So like, where are those opportunities to capture those books? And I just thought of that based off of you sharing, um, trying to find the, the local talent. Um, so I just wanted to throw that out as an.
No, I'm glad you did, uh, Mayor Williamson, because, yeah, that we, we definitely understand post and pray is not a strategy, uh, by any means, you know, for us, it's not only looking at who do we have internally to grow, but then also how early can we start? We have, uh, folks who are high school graduates going to Cal Poly or other, uh, schools. We actually have, um, a student who's working on her engineering degree. She's, uh, at Hartnell. And we've told her, we've got a spot for you when you finish your degree at Hartnell, when you get your bachelor's degree and get your professional engineer's degree. And we're starting, we're starting young. We had a, uh, over the years participated in the county's high school experience, uh, internship program. So we actually have, uh, high school students from Marina, Monterey High School, get them exposed to city government early, and then they end up coming back. Uh, we have a very strong internship program with college students, not only at CSUMB, but also at Middlebury College, which is right across the street. So we actually have grad students who, uh, who come back, uh, and, uh, several Middle, Middle, Middlebury, uh, grads who are, uh, part of our city's workforce. So, um, absolutely. Uh, I think that's, uh, an important piece of starting with the universities and even with the high schools, uh, to be honest. And then, like you mentioned earlier, looking at what associations do folks belong to? If they're engineers, do they belong to APWA, the American Public Works Association? Planners are very active in Cal APA, the California American Planning Association, right? So, uh, depending on what that profession is, they're very niche, but getting into those networks. And we're also encouraging our employees and we're seeing a lot of it last week. We had Public Works, uh, Week and, uh, our Public Works team, everyone from not only a Public Works Director Andrea Rennie, but also Jeff Glass, uh, real, is really active on LinkedIn. So those are other ways we're promoting what a great place it is to work here in Monterey. Why folks from the Bay Area where you may not have a quality of life or work-life balance. You know, my commute for sixteen miles used to be an hour and now it's fifteen minutes. Being here in Monterey is where, where you want to be because of the workplace culture. It's also because of the quality of life that we have here in the Monterey County. So those are the types of things that we're trying to do to recruit folks, uh, from, uh, other areas as well. And aside from just from the ground.
Think Andrea's going to take a clip of that testimonial and use it in her next LinkedIn post. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely. Um, we're also, um, you know, we've talked over the years about providing generative, uh, artificial intelligence tools for employees. Uh, we are currently in the Microsoft Network, so we use Office three sixty five's platform. One of their tools is Copilot. So we'll be launching Copilot to a few. We're going to start in a phased approach, uh, and, uh, and provide access to, to that. Uh, we'll be modernizing document management and digitization, digitization of files. Yep.
I, I was just, I was just going to say, I, I have Copilot through work and just for maybe making it easy to understand for folks, it's basically Microsoft's version of ChatGPT.
Yep, exactly.
And, uh, yeah, it, it's wonderful tool.
Yep. One of the things we pride ourselves on here in Monterey is being able to allow employees who start, uh, here to also, if they're going to grow, rather than losing an employee to another agency, is what other opportunities are there within the city? We've had employees in HR go to fire, employees in recreation go to city manager's office and then other departments. So we, we promote that. And one of the ways to help, uh, highlight other areas of service delivery to employees is what we're launching this year is the Team Monterey City Services Academy. So we're actually running that in tandem with the Citizens Academy. And for those who aren't in the ONDA Academy as supervisors or managers, anyone can sign up. They can, uh, they can apply and, uh, and learn about other parts of the city government because let's face it, there's employees in police or might be in public works who don't know anything about community development and want to learn more. So it's twofold. It helps with, you know, recruitment and attraction, but also helps city employees connect with other employees within the city. And we do have a workforce of nearly five hundred full-time employees. So. Yeah. So that's an effort that, uh, we're leading as city manager's office, but we're allowing each department head to, and each department who's, they're experts in their field to highlight and talk about their area of service delivery. Um, and, um, we're not only making it so that it's for department heads to share, but it's also for other employees to talk about their, uh, what they manage, that the services they provide and because there's a lot of pride within each department. Okay. Any other comments or questions on quality workforce before we go to the last item, which is housing, affordable housing and securing water sources? All right. We're going to bring, uh, Kim Cole back up here, our expert on affordable housing and securing water sources. Go for it, Kim.
Thank you very much. Um, I just briefly wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, first about the changing state regulatory environment. Um, it's unprecedented in my career, what's happening at the state level and how that's impacting local government. And it's basically because of the housing crisis that our governor has proclaimed. Um, the most recent example of that is the California, uh, Assembly created a select committee, published a white paper, just came out a couple of months ago, and we expect twenty to twenty-five new laws that aren't even included in our housing element that we will need to comply with in some way, depending on which ones get passed. In addition, I'm sure you've heard that HCD now has an enforcement arm. So, um, I have one example of, um, how that's impacting local government. We always, every year have to by law submit our housing element annual report. That's usually, you know, one public hearing here at the city council takes about eighty to a hundred hours to prepare. Once we submitted that to the state on time this year, um, we went back and forth at a very technical level with the state staff. Um, I think it was seven to eight conversations with the state because what they're trying to do is take all our information and put it into a statewide database. So actions that even in the past were more routine are dramatically increased as far as the resources that are needed at the planning level. Our current planning staff, we have four city planners and one planning manager. Um, the four planners equal about a hundred and sixty hours of staff capacity, um, a week. Um, ninety percent of our time is currently devoted to providing, um, assistance for current planning projects. There's a very high expectation in our community that if you come to our planning or building owners, that you can speak to someone about the permits you need, that you can get technically reliable and detailed information so you can make decisions on how to proceed. Um, for example, I would say almost anyone that's. For example, I would say almost anyone that's purchasing a property in the city will talk to not only the real estate agent, but multiple potential buyers on what they're thinking about for that property, what's possible. And as that conversation gets more complex because of the financial investments that are required in Monterey to purchase property, while those conversations may start at the planning office counter, they can very well end up at the planning manager or my level, especially when we're looking at commercial properties and the uncertainty for water. That doesn't even get to all of the permits that we do that are from minor to major permits. You see a regular report, we average in the planning office between 300 and 350 permits annually. Some of those are very small, some of those are really complicated with large environmental documents. We know that number of permits is going to increase because we are taking that necessary step to do use review for every new business that's opening in the city and trying to close that gap that we recently identified. I just give you that as background. We are really staffed at a planning level. At our current level, we have about eight days per month to work on advanced planning items. And the challenge that's before us is our housing element implementation. It's almost, I think, three quarters of a page of your work program that's in front of you. I just want to take a moment and celebrate because while that all sounds very concerning, I'm very proud of our team as well. In July, our city council adopted the housing element. By state law, this HCD has 90 days in addition to certify it. They certified it in October. As you know, many of the jurisdictions around us have not achieved that. So we've not only achieved that, we've submitted our compliance report. That report that I said took seven times going back and forth with the state, it was accepted. And just to give you an idea, the documents sitting next to Ms. Davi are the example of the strategic, that's the general plan update, the environmental documents and all the things that are, that we went through to get certification. And really sort of a crowning achievement that was achieved just earlier this month is the American Planning Association identified for the Northern California section as a planning excellence award. And they had a video about the efforts the city went to, to look at accommodating 3,654 new housing units during the housing element period. So that's a significant achievement. What happened after October is we immediately transitioned into rezoning. And so in December, the city council rezoned properties to comply with the December deadline. We also adopted a new density bonus ordinance. So that wraps up 2024. We're now about five months into 2025. I'm happy to report that basically we've completed 19 housing element programs in the last five months. A lot of those are lower hanging fruit. You know, we went through the whole list and said, what can we accomplish fairly quickly? We have another 26 programs in project, in progress. So overall, our team is touched or is touching about 62% of the 53 housing element programs. So that's 33 housing element programs. I think that's a tremendous accomplishment for the first five months. But we have a lot to do. And so I want, and it's a little daunting and part of me being in front of you is to talk about or to provide the transparency. The mayor already identified the issue with some of our deadlines and to just talk through that briefly. Some of the things you can expect in 2025, SB 9 amendments will be in front of the planning commission as early as next month. We're also working on our, I believe, our sixth accessory dwelling unit update, which wasn't even required by our housing element, but state law changed, so we're working on that. The inclusionary housing element is required by our, to be updated. We're going to be working on pre-approved ADU plans. You've heard about the climate action plan. We're actually slated to finish that by the end of this fiscal year. And we're also working diligently on our local coastal plan, which was part of our housing element as well. So those, the local coastal plan is, we probably won't be presenting it to you. You know, it's, it's at least a year for us to continue to work through that, but we are working on it every week. In 2026, a lot of the things that you see are a lot of the zoning ordinance cleanups that are required for zoning classifications, residential care, transitional housing, low barrier navigation centers, single room occupancy units, mobile and manufactured homes, reasonable accommodation and employee workforce housing overlay. We will be working very closely with our city attorney's office on all of these legislative and updates. But there's some really big items that are very challenging for us to get to. It is an eight-year implementation period, but the big things on the horizon that take a lot of time. The four-door specific plan, the Highway 68 plan, those in themselves can take years for us to implement. We do have eight years ultimately to complete our housing element programs. The mayor asked, and I'll just sort of, our strategy is we're behind right now. Even though we've initiated over 60% of the programs, we're behind. And we don't really have the capacity to meet all of those deadlines. So there's multiple options, there's staffing options that ultimately need to be made. There are opportunities maybe to go back to HCD and change some of the deadlines and show, because we've made tremendous progress, I think we're in their good graces right now and look to see if we can move some of those deadlines. And so we just ultimately have a large challenge in front of us. I am proud of the work that we've accomplished, but part of what we're going to be working with the city council on and the city, city manager's office is how do we rectify some of those deadline issues? So that's all I have. If you have any more questions about specific programs, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Kim, for the overview there. And yes, although it is daunting, many kudos to you and your team for all the work that you all do. I know that the council and the community has a high expectation from the community development department. So I just want to be able to acknowledge that. And it says something that the state has recognized the city for their efforts as it relates to the housing element. So truly, truly thank you and your team for, for all the work that's done there. I wonder if we could take a hybrid approach in requesting an update to some of the deadlines with HCD, but also given the items that we had in our agenda from the last council meeting with allocating funding for consultant support, how could we leverage some of that to help maybe offload some of the work? And I don't know if it's this level of work or some other work that is that part of that 90% of that kind of typical time spent in the planning department? And I could be speaking completely naive in regards to how you see this working, but I just wondered what your thoughts are on that.
So I think we are going to have to regroup with the council and HCD on timelines. I think we are going to have to address that issue. We are exploring which projects, project by project, we can bring consultants in on. In some cases, we use outside legal services on certain ordinances. And then we also bolster our staff to try to actually produce complete documents like that and to do some. We try to do all the public outreach, you know, trying to integrate that. So already we build in some consultant work. The big thing that we've discovered is to actually create a product that represents our community. There is a high level of review that our planners need to do. And I'm concerned based on the current deadlines, we just don't have enough.
And that can usually be an ongoing challenge. And thank you, Kim, for, for, and you're welcome to stay around, but.
Before she disappears.
Yeah.
Before she disappears.
Sorry, just got a really quick comment. So I think what's important is that we realize, you know, how, that a lot of the work that is in community development isn't just on the housing side, it's the ongoing, as Kim mentioned, it's the ongoing planning applications. When you look at priorities on the list relating to infrastructure, I mean, you've even got, you know, community development's got some of that with the sea level rise study and the planning efforts, economic development. Every, every priority that council has, community engagement includes items that an already strained department has. And I know we're doing our best to work with HCD. Just as a reminder, back on the first meeting in May, council supports AB 650. This is an assembly bill that is supposed to simplify the process and clear standards and allows some earlier updates and refinement of housing element implementation. So that's good. It hasn't been killed in the Senate or the assembly yet, but you know, it's actions like that that are going to make the difference as well and help our team out a little bit.
Can I just add, well, I'll let you go first and then I'll jump back.
Yeah, two, two things. Thank you very much. And I think we all, we all recognize and appreciate the amount of work and the personalities that are in planning that are able to interface with the clients, the customers. And it's been a heavy lift for two years. Almost feel like we should close for two weeks and just let planning go to Hawaii for two weeks. Because we have seen parts of planning over the last two years that's continued to come at a breakneck speed. So thank you very much for your leadership and thank you to all the staff that's in planning. The other thing I would say is that I hear very frequently from folks in the community that are in the process of needing something, in the process of planning for their projects, whether it's commercial, residential and others. And our planning and our building departments have a tremendous reputation in the city of Monterey.
Thank you.
Compared to some other cities and a county. We are the gold standard and it's recognized and very much appreciated. Because when delays occur, that's money to the applicant. And so you know, if it adds, if you have to add two or three weeks to it, that permit although is perfunctory and a rate, the other cost is on the delays. And so that's, that's where, you know, the counter can be an extremely testy place when you have to tell somebody you can't rapidly issue it like in three days, it's going to be a month. That costs a lot of money, so you do that well. That truly is a top standard. I did have on my list, and you mentioned it, and I'm so glad you did, what's the coastal area plan? It's just been, you know, the coastal plan has been such a big lift. There's just been a lot of news about it, but it's not on this list.
Oh, it is, but it's.
Find it.
134.
Was it in the red?
134.
I got blinded by it, I was looking at all.
I know, me too.
Okay, now could you scroll?
No, that's fine, I can see it. There it is, 134. Much appreciated. I know it's a long, a long timeframe. And is that one that we're still utilizing outside consultant sources?
We are, so we're working, so we're meeting internally once a week and we have one planner that's spending quite a bit of time on that. And we have an outside consultant helping us as well. So it's very much the housing element approach.
Right.
Where we're trying to leverage both. But because we're focused on that, you know, it's just, that's a huge lift. The local coastal plan is a huge lift.
Yeah. And I know we'll get there. It's hard, we have to get there. And it's, it's going to offer us exceptional benefits in the long run. But thank you for that effort and that work. And it does require patience on everybody's part. When you're talking about five plus yourself, staff members, when you look at the work plan, you're doing the work of many, many more. So greatly appreciated. And thank you for all your efforts, for all the things that this council seems to find ways to throw at you. You've handled it all, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our team appreciates that.
Dr. Barber.
Yeah, I wanted to be able to say congratulations because I heard that as far as that award. Congratulations on that. And I mean, that, I don't, we don't take that lightly. That's something that, that we know that you worked hard and your staff worked hard for. So congratulations on being able to achieve that and being able to continue to maneuver through all of this. Because it, you know, the reigning numbers were, has been hard for everybody. But I know with us, like you said, 3654, I hear it in my sleep, you know, and so I really.
I won't tell you what I hear.
So I really appreciate, you know, you and your staff being able to, you know, hold your wits about yourself and being able to continue to move forward with all the changes, you know, coming and the changes that are going to come. And as you said, even from the state level. But being able to know that we're here and we want to work together so that we can be able to get to the goal together. So thank you.
Just thank you. Your, your team is great and you're a victim of your own success because then the community wants that gold standard and then you have to keep working really hard. It's very appreciated. Thank you.
Just to kind of get a context, so you were recognized and what, what was the pool? How many jurisdictions are we talking about here?
So I don't know that we know how many applications were submitted. But it was sort of, it was the only time in my career, so.
I'll take it.
You know, 20.
What I was trying to get at is congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I add a comment?
Please.
Okay, I just want to, you know, again, kudos to community development. And I would be remiss, you know, if we didn't say the culmination of all of these efforts across the organization. You know, there's other, other awards, other departments have received too. Sports Center always gets, you know, best fitness facility in the county. Finance gets the annual GFOA award for their presentation. So kudos to the entire city staff because, you know, of course, you know, Kim gets and her team, Levi, who's here, all the credit, you know, and on the community development efforts. We have 174 items on this list and it represents only a fraction of the work that takes place among the entire city workforce. So we just wanted to say that. And a lot of this wouldn't be possible, not only for the community development side, but I have to give kudos to two other groups. One is city attorney's office, Chrissy Left, of course. Yeah. Grab a seat in the front row, Kim.
Oh.
But you know, I do need to acknowledge and recognize that every single, it's not just the agenda reports, but every item that goes before council requires legal review. And that isn't possible without city attorney's office and Chrissy and Karen and their team. So kudos to them. And then also finance, because every action requires fiscal stewardship, managing the funds, the accounting, Rafella and her team are outstanding as well. And of course, HR for their work and managing the workforce piece of things. And I want to thank you, council, because every time you recognize and acknowledge staff for their hard work, it means a lot to them. So thanks for your support and guidance through this process and then receiving the, the action item schedule for today.
Awesome. Thank you. And yes, everybody on staff is doing wonderful work. And I think the fact that there's these various departments that have received all these awards is testament to that. I think Kim deserves a little extra love today. So especially because she, yes, 100%. Kim and team. Especially because she was the only one that really presented on her items specifically because she has a whole section here. So anyways, thank you, Kim. I did have two more thoughts that I wanted to connect with you on before I open it up for public comment on this one. So my question is, as we've do these zoning law changes and implement these programs that would presumably allow more density housing construction that we'd have to go through your office and say that by this time next year, we have water, additional water allocation available, how, how do you imagine that we would take in that additional workload? Given that it seems like we're already at capacity?
I think the critical question is, are we going to have additional water? And so we're going to be bringing forth some discussions to the city council. And I wouldn't recommend that we hire, well, we, we need staff to be able to finish housing element programs, but. we hire, well, we, we need staff to be able to finish housing element programs, but it, for the amount of development that's potentially going to happen with water, I think it deserves a whole sort of rethinking of strategy. And I'm not sure what that brings. We have two building inspectors. We have four planners. If we have to process permits for thousands of housing units, that's a, that's a different.
Ballgame.
That's a different ballgame.
Yeah. Speaking to the water piece, actually, I think I saw that on here. And I think it was, yeah, item one thirty-three. And it looked like we were looking at quarter one of twenty-six. I don't know how much, I don't know what I can say. I know that there's potentially a possibility for a proposal to go to the state water resources control board by the end of the year for consideration in early 2026. So we could go into 2026 early on and potentially have the cease and desist order lifted, either it be temporarily or permanently. And that many not even happened, but I'm saying conditioned on the, the possibility that it does, I would just offer, suggest that we move, we slide that one up in time. And when I talked to Hans about this last, I think he mentioned to be quarter three of 2005. So I just wanted to throw that out since you raised the water issue. And then given this tension that exists between our current efforts and the workload now, but also if, if there's an increase in workload due to increased permit applications, I think it might be helpful to just have a proposal from staff in regards to how do we address that? So I don't know what your thoughts are. Maybe just kind of rhetorically sharing that. And maybe that's something that we maybe just add to the work plan, not to add more work, but I think it's helpful to kind of plan for that and not just sit and wait until the problem is here. So.
Yeah, I, I think that's just, from my standpoint, that's going to require additional thought. I know the council's also confronted with a challenging budget season. So I'm going to really need to look to guidance to the city manager's office on how to resolve.
And we've had several conversations with Kim's team. We know this is, there's that balance we, we want to provide and the goal is provide the staff with the resources they need to be successful and to deliver on the programs and what's legally required, what's, what is desired by council. And that's why this prioritization exercise and going through the action item schedule is so critical because we're facing a multi-million dollar budget challenge. And every position counts, every dollar counts. We went through and Raffela will explain next week. We go through the budget. I mean, every department was asked to cut seven percent of their budget from last year in order to make this year's budget work. That same strategy is not going to work next year. It won't, it's not going to fix the budget next year. We're going to be, so it just tells you as much as we like to say, hey, let's approve three additional planning staff to, we can't do that without saying, okay, where do we want to cut, you know, and I'm, we're not at a point where we're asking department heads, so you know, what, let's, what positions do we not want to fill? So we're starting those conversations in terms of new hires, but not at existing staff. So trying to balance that need, the reserves, the ongoing liabilities, and then plus, of course, the infrastructure funding challenge that we're all faced with as well. So that's part of the conversation.
Well, and then I imagine that all these infrastructure projects that we're talking about them needing, there's a need for to fund those things, right? Those are city projects that are also going to require review by community development. So there's going to be an increase in workload there. We have, we can't just not address it. So I think it's helpful to maybe add an item to our work plan here that has some presentation from, from the city manager's office in regards to how to strategically approach that. These are the, this is why we're here. This is the tough thing. We can't just ignore it and think it's going to go away.
Absolutely. These are the tough decisions.
Please. Yeah, I just wanted to give some, council's the wrong word, just my perspective on the water. There's so many moving parts. We watch the newspaper every day. We have the PUC News that just came in with an opinion on what Cal AM has asked for with the, the water amount. We know the Water Resources holds the key to relief from the CDO. And, and that can happen on a request from Cal AM and some other partners, but we don't know when they're going to work, but they have to schedule that. But history serves well to, when you look at Coastal Commission, how long it takes to get on the agenda, how long it takes to get on the Water Resources agenda, the PUC agendas, those generally are six months to a year to even get on the agenda. So I think we're going to have signals that are going to give us adequate time to gather where we will get information and advice and recommendations from staff where this council will be talking about policies on when there's additional water. I mean, those are, those are policy decisions that we'll face, but I'm not too concerned about that happening too fast. And I just think that we need to balance a lot of the other things that are in that code three and code two and, you know, nice to have and anticipating. I don't think we've got staff where we have the luxury to be able to take them off of current emergencies and workload that is now, when we're trying to anticipate what may come from the state. I think that we just have to continue to watch. And I think our staff is nimble and quick and smart. And I think when it's time, they'll be able to present to us the options for our policies on additional water and what that means. But we do need to think in terms of additional water does change the complexion of this city with the number of applications that will come, with the number of building permits that are requested. And there is also a pent up demand for those. And so the public can't expect that things are going to move at breakneck speed just because suddenly the newspaper says the CDO has been lifted. Each city on the peninsula will be in the same position. And so we can only move as fast as you can. And I don't think it's going to be an all open, all the barrels are open all at once. I think it's going to be more of a, a slow and gradual, and we'll be able to see and adequately provide the leadership and respond to the changing and contemporary events that we'll be facing in 2026 and beyond. So concerned about it, not panicked about it. And I'm more concerned about not adding more work to our thin staff that is going to necessitate more costs when we have to use outside consultants. So we have a decision. Do we want to spend that money for outside consultants because it's urgent that we move it forward because it's mission related? That comes with a cost. And so I'm, I'm aware and watching and want to stay with the conservative approach when it comes to the dollar right now. And especially moving forward to twenty-six and twenty-seven with the capital improvements that we have facing us. Right now, it's going to be all about being very, very careful with the limited minimum resources we have. That's just my mindset.
Yep. So there was a lot there and I, but the part that I will address is, is the water piece. I mean, I think Hans has already expressed to me that we're good to have this discussion earlier. So I just wanted to get that part clarified. And there's no need for us to wait if we don't need to. And, and the timeline that has been communicated to me is different than what you're articulating now. This isn't to say that it will move forward in that timeline, but I, I think why wait till there's additional pressure? So I.
Part of it is, yeah.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just saying we can finish that one item. This isn't to say that we're going to move forward in a dramatic way on a lot of projects. I just think it's just trying to check that off of our list and, and move on with the, with the different elements that are associated with the, with the process.
No, I understand what you're saying, but any staff is going to sit down and they're going to say, okay, we need a policy. Well, how much water do we have? How much water is coming our way?
Been presented to us.
Yeah. So, so that's not, now, depending on which source, we haven't had the California Water Resources come here and tell us the cease and desist is relieved. And we also haven't had a project two delivery firm date of opening and when water is available. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts on water. I agree. We'll need to face it with policy decisions. But it's the timing is not to overload staff with something that we can't get answers to yet because we don't know when the water is available and how much water is available and whether it's coming all from the relief from the CDO or if it's coming from MW one in their phase two.
All right. For sake of time, I'm going to have us move on. I, I just.
And I'm ready to move on.
Yeah. I just had a few last minute things that I wanted to throw out. And I wanted to show this before it went to the public so they could provide input if they'd like. A couple of other items that I didn't see on the list. Election signage. There was the, I had brought this up during the strategic planning discussion. And what happened during the election was folks took a large sign that was, that were put up illegally. And then they cut them up and they separated them enough so that they became individual signs. So the idea is that we should probably have a policy that says you can't take multiple signs and make them a larger sign. And then a dig once policy. I know that that's a line effort that has a lot to do with the idea of undergrounding. And if we're already digging the road up, I know that there's some complexity associated with that. We've had a lot of conversations on the council with that, but I, I'd be interested in seeing that piece move forward. And then there's one last thing that I don't know if we're going to get to today, but I just want to share this out loud in a public setting. There is a lot going on in the council. And as you articulated at the beginning of this discussion, the last few council meetings have gone well into the evening. The council hasn't had much of a break at all, even during the dinner break. I mean, we worked straight through. So one of the things that I've been talking to staff about is adding us an additional special meeting on a regular recurring basis in the month. So that way, if we need an overflow council meeting, which is kind of how we ended up with that meeting on Friday, it wasn't me. I didn't intentionally plan to schedule a meeting on a Friday afternoon. It was just the meeting that happened to work for the majority of the council. But it would be good to, I just wanted to be able to communicate this publicly as, as an effort that we're trying to move towards. And so it would be great to have a conversation as a council in regards to what regular reoccurring day works best for the council so that we can get that in. And then that way, if we need it, we can use it. If not, we don't need to use it. So I just wanted to kind of communicate that publicly so that we can try to not keep the public out until 11 o'clock at night when they're trying to handle their issue. I don't think that's very fair and transparent either. So, all right. Any last minute questions, comments before we go to the public? Please.
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that also I didn't see on the list. Economic development as it relates to North Fremont Business District. I know, I know it might be under the item sixty-nine development strategy, but I think it'd be good to, you know, create a, a separate line for that. Laguna Grande, item one oh four. I, I think it would be, would be good to start having those conversations internally and also with the other jurisdictions involved with the park in terms of what that maintenance partnership could look like. Because as far as I understand permitting, we should have it all completed, maybe by, by the end of summer, maybe into the fall or something like that. So rather than wait until that's done to start having those conversations, I think it'd be good to start having those conversations now. Casanova Park Center, the reopening of, of that site, or, you know, other potential opportunities for that site. I didn't see that on the list and I, I think it'd be important to include it. And just happy to see climate, the update to the climate action plan on the list.
Ready to go to the public comment? All right. With that, we will open it for public comments, just to share it there.
Need to turn my mic on. Just to share with everybody. How we part, how we do the public comment is we identify the folks at the beginning of the public comment period. Once those folks have been identified, we will close it off. And then only those folks will be able to speak. So I will start off with folks on Zoom. If you can navigate your way to the raise hand function, while you're navigating your way there, I'll check in the chamber. If anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item, I'll just ask you stand up to the left of the podium or identify yourself by raising your hand. This is the first, the item that we're just, we've been talking about the entire meeting. Everything that we've been talking about as far as this council's plan, that's, that's, that's the public comment period for this. So we have two folks in the chamber. Anybody else in the chamber? We have three folks in the chamber. Anybody else in the chamber want to speak on this item? All right. So we'll go ahead and cut it off in the chamber to those three. We'll do a countdown for folks on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have two on Zoom. I'm going to go ahead and limit it to two minutes. Two of us have to get out of here in fifteen minutes. We don't have too much time to wrap this up. And anyways, let's go ahead and take public comment in the chamber.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity. Oh, my name is Mabel Armut, and I've been a resident of Monterey for forty-three years. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to the council today. I see that the city council is setting the agendas for the schedule for action items. On behalf of myself and my neighbors who submitted the petition for an indoor smoking ban in multi-unit residential buildings, we urge you please to consider this item for approval. We have previously submitted the Pacific Grove and Del Rio ordinances where such a ban has been enacted in both our neighboring cities. Monterey cannot lag behind in taking care of the health of its residents. I also want to say this ordinance wouldn't require any extra water and will reduce the hazard of fire because people wouldn't be smoking inside. Thank you so much for the work you do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. My name is Jeff Whitmire. I've been a Monterey resident for the last fifteen years. Would note that in 2022, I believe in June, the city passed an ordinance to fly the pride flag during the month of June. I would notice that this year it's not June and the flag is up. And I'd like to know why the city doesn't have to follow its own policies and ordinances.
So this, this is not a time for us to engage in conversation. So you make all your public comments now and then it'll come back to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor members of the council, I'm required, longtime resident of Monterey. I want to commend you on doing this process. I think it was a lot of help for the public to see what you've been doing, having actual timelines on it and all the rest. And my only other comment is as it relates to water, it is a long ways off. The Water Management District can dream all they want of getting them to release the CDO. They haven't had a great track record so far with the, and you will have plenty of warning when it gets to that stage. So I would not spend any staff resources on that now. You'll have plenty of time to gear up for it because it's not going to be all of a sudden it happens and there's going to be a flood of things to, to deal with. Because you know, once this lifted, then you're going to have the Water Management District holding hearings and how they're even going to allocate the water. And it's a long ways off. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll go to our public commentators on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead, Esther. You can unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to comment. I mean, this report and this whole meeting shows what a great staff we have in the city. And Ed mentioned that we are the envy of our neighboring cities. And I think it's important that those that continue to say unrealistic things like we need to pay our city staff less, which in the weekly that's coming out tomorrow, you will see a number of comments like that about our city because something was written in last week's. And those very people that are making those comments about cutting staff and cutting our, you know, expenses and our budgets are the very first ones that are going to be in line to complain about what's not getting done and how it's not getting done fast enough. And we, you know, they have to understand that for us to retain a staff as good as we have, we've got to be competitive. And no matter how much they want to complain and act like running a city budget is the same as running a household budget, that comes from people who clearly are not paying attention to how much. That comes from people who clearly are not paying attention to how much you guys are doing. And the city council as well to have to sit till after eleven o'clock on a city council meeting and a couple of days later have to come back and do this again today. And then on Tuesday, you're going to have another council meeting already. People don't appreciate how much is done for this to city to be as great as it is. So I would, you know, commend the staff, Kim in particular, that award is so, so well deserved. And I just hope that people stop focusing on so many negative things about how the city is run and what the city is doing and the city council and just take a minute to enjoy and appreciate what we have, especially by comparison to other cities. And yes, it's going to be a tough ride, but we'll have to deal with it in a way that hopefully will be civil and not obnoxious like some people like to do publicly. Thank you.
Are we able to unmute?
Sorry, I'm trying to get my screen to come up again. Why is it not?
I can switch over here. Diane?
It's not popping up for me.
Diane Coward. You may speak.
There we go. Hi there. I'll make this quick. Can you hear me?
You can hear you.
Okay, I just want to make this quick. As a client and customer of the Bill, Kim's department, I just want to say it's amazing. You guys have been incredibly great and wonderful to work with. And so all of you guys, kudos. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you for making my life a lot easier.
Thank you for that public comment. What a great way to end the public comment period, bringing it back to the council. Any final comments, please?
It just, I don't want to pass up, but staff does lead the way, but we have amazing boards and commissions, planning commission, ARC and all the rest. And we're, we're probably not going to get to the next item, but we're going to talk about all the other boards and commissions at some point that that we know that serve us so well. So in the context of our work plan, I just didn't want to overlook the fact, but thank you for boards and commissioners. I know there's some planning commissioners here, maybe even some ARC board members as well. So thank you for your service as well.
Yeah, I, I echo that. And as much as we are talking about, I know the other item on the agenda was to talk about the nominations of boards, commissions and committees and potentially the consolidation of some. I just want folks to be aware that this has, this has nothing to do personally with anybody that's serving in the capacity as boards, commissions, committee members. You all do amazing work on behalf of the city. And more so in the council, at least this council gets a somewhat decent stipend. I think there's, how much do you all get? Like twenty-five dollars a quarter or something? There's something, there's something that is, no, there's something that's given. I, when I was on the ARC, they gave, they sent me a Yeah. Oh, it's not every commission.
Considerment. Yeah, there's some problems.
Okay, well, I don't mean to strike a chord, but thank you for what you all do. Any last minute comments from the council before we move on to the next item?
None from here.
Okay.
I, and we are requesting approval of recognizing that this is a living document.
Thank you. I'm actually going to ask, I'll make a motion that we have staff take some of the input that was provided and then bring this back at a later date. I don't know. Let me, that's my motion.
Second.
Does that delay anything that the city staff is waiting for?
It, it does not, but I will say, I think, you know, our, we're happy to update and provide more guidance perhaps. We just don't know how soon it'll be, given the volume of items on the agenda over the next month and a half. If council's comfortable not formally approving it, that's fine. We have your feedback. But our, at least I know staff's hope was to seek approval and then, you know, additional always happy to come back with, with an update tonight. So.
Well, if it works for city staff, you know, we'll have, staff will have another opportunity after we approve the budget as well. So there may be some additional tweaking. So I can support it.
Any last minute comments on the motion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And then item number two, we're going to have to continue it. Is that the? I don't know why I never get this right. Continue? Yeah. Date certain. Do we have an idea of when this could come back?
This item, we, because next week we have a packed agenda in the evening, we have budget adoption, salary schedule, CIP recommendations, other guidance to NCIP committee. I can tell you probably the evening of June seventeenth, we can make time for that if council's interested.
Okay, well, I'm going to make a motion to table for now, just so that we can make sure we work out the logistics as far as the agenda, particularly as it relates to getting something in for the special council meeting in the month. So if we need to move things around, I just want to make sure that we're not overloading our agendas. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to the table. All right. Oh. Thank you. Sorry, I apologize. Getting ahead of myself here. Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Is there any possibility of just doing tonight the nomination part because the community is so ready? The staff did a fabulous job. It's going to be A, B, C, D, E. And, and putting the question of combining commissions off to when you wanted to do term limits. Putting that discussion because that hasn't even gone through. Combining has not gone through the the neighborhood associations or the community. That was a brand new item. I bet we could do it quickly.
I don't have time. I personally don't. And I know that Dr. Barbara, she's already packing up. I know that there's a time limit here. So, and I think it's an important discussion for the entire council to be here on. So.
Well, the only, the only comment, go ahead.
I was just going to go out to the public, get public comment on the item.
And yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay, so open it for public comment for folks on Zoom. You can use a raise hand function. And for folks in the chamber, if anybody wants to speak on this item. So just to clarify, there's a motion on the table to table this item so it comes back at a future date.
Or is it about the item itself?
Well, you could, either way, the, 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 the item that we're tabling is on the agenda. So you can provide public comments on the item on the agenda if you so like, but we're but if the motion passes, that's correct. That's correct. Yeah, the, yes.
Friendly amendment?
Public comment isn't, well, we're out to public comment right now. So let's let the public provide comment. So anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item, please go ahead and stand to the left of the podium or identify yourself by raising your hand. So we have one, two, three. Are both of you? Okay, so we have three in the chamber. Anybody else? All right. So we'll go ahead and cut it off in the chamber and we'll check on Zoom. I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one.
We have three.
We have three on Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead and leave it to a minute just for sake of time here. Yes, please.
My name's Elizabeth Janisch and I am thirty-three year resident of Monterey. And I'm here to speak on behalf as a citizen and a resident of my neighborhood. And I'm here with the privilege and responsibility to be here and add my support for the proposed changes in our city's governance ordinance for appointing commission positions. I believe the ordinance changes are progressive for our community, offering transparency of process, inclusion of the community in that process, and the diversity of council member engagement with rotating positions for vetting the candidates. So in addition, and of course with the assistance and in assistance to city and council, is the neighborhood's role in helping to identify candidates for their interest and commitment to serve in these positions. That's our job and we're a resource for you to tap into. Now more than ever, we must not take for granted our privilege and responsibility to speak out when we need to. I thought, okay, and thank you very much.
Sorry. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I'm Mike Sovereign. I'm really privileged to be able to make this talk with the council. I'm the current chair of the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission. I'm a fifty-five year resident. I've been on the museums commission for about ten years. And there've been very little communication between the city council and at least our commission in recent years. And I think that's a mistake. I believe that the commissions are a item of transparency which provides insight into what the staffs are doing to you, the council. And doing away with commissioners is a mistake.
Hello, I'm Reenie Kimsey, Vice Chair of the Museums and Cultural Arts Commission, MCAC. When reading today's agenda, I decided to share the following comments with you. While the staff report did not provide details of proposed combining of MCAC and Historic Preservation Commission, it would seem the goal is to reduce the number of commissioners and would therefore reduce the amount of expertise and resources which they provide to maintain the quality of our historic and culturally rich city. Current MCAC members, members represent over two hundred years of life experience in and dedicated service to Monterey. Individually, they have produced historic reenactments, provided regular cultural tours, volunteered at multitudinous events and so forth. They freely given of their time and talents, not for monetary compensation, but out of dedication to our wonderful city. Therefore, I urge you to reconsider the reduction in downsizing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And with that, we'll go to our callers on Zoom.
Okay, Shelley, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, good afternoon. I urge the council to actually table public comment. One minute is not long enough to voice concerns. But given that we seem to want to brush this through, I'll just quickly pinpoint my items. Um, this proposal seems to be focused on the NCIP appointments. The, the neighborhood association should be able to voice their opinion as public comment the same as any member of the public. They shouldn't be given special preferential treatment of their recommendations. If you allow the NAs to do that, you allow, you have to open the door for every other group that's involved in land use planning, historical societies, et cetera, to have the same opportunity to recommend and voice their opinions on who should be assigned or appointed to a commission. You're also limiting the pool of candidates by a great deal. And I also have concerns that two of the council members presented this proposal to the NA leadership and not to NCIP. And also some of the neighborhood associations do not do outreach regarding this issue. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Shelley. Was there one more?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Lori Makuza. Ozuka, I'm sorry, Lori Mazuka.
Yeah, well, I'm just going to say I'm frustrated to sit at these meetings. You want public engagement. We want to be involved. And I was at a meeting recently where I sat for five hours and I don't even know if you ever got to it. I think you ended up doing the same thing, tabling it to another meeting. I've been sitting here for two and a half hours after a workday, haven't walked my dog, haven't eaten dinner. So we don't eat dinner either because we're waiting to be able to speak. So it's just really disrespectful of our time. And I just, I would like you all to be more mindful of planning, planning agendas, planning these times. And if you knew you were going to take, I mean, two and a half hours, you've been sitting here, why couldn't you have figured it out much sooner and cut us all loose? So I've got comments prepared in letters. I'd like direction. Should we send all of that stuff that we sent in today that we're not going to have? Is it going to be automatically forwarded to the next folder? Anyway, just frustrating.
Okay. And with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment.
No, we have one more.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay. Go ahead, Chelsea Lenovska.
Hi, yes, Chelsea Lenovska. I just want to basically mirror actually what Lori said about the time considerations here. I think generally it is hard to have the foresight to plan and how long some of these topics will take. But I've noticed that many of the recent city council meetings have been trying to put too many big items on the agenda at once, especially when we have known time constraints at the outset. With that, because so many of these proposals for the nominations have to do with increasing the workload of both city staff and council members. I do not think that this should be held any further tonight. I do not think there should be a vote on it. And I do think it should be tabled. But I do request for, you know, many of us that maybe we don't front load some of these meetings when, when we know that this will take forever in some of these topics. So thank you.
Okay. We go to the walkie.
Chelsea, were you done there?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I heard some background noise there. I just wanted to provide a quick response to some of the comments. So there was a comment around public comment period for this item. I condensed it intentionally because of the time tonight, but there will be additional public comment offered, just to clarify, when this comes back to the council. So we'll open it back up and we'll be sure to provide the full three minute public comment period so that folks can can share their thoughts as it relates to this. And I put second item and I don't know why I wrote that. I can't read my notes, but please.
I just want the public to know that the mayor did approach me about whether we would have enough time. And I wanted to go forward with it. So I should take some of the heat for the long wait that the public has taken. I think, I think the compromise might be rather than tabling it, reschedule it to a time certain.
Please.
So, yeah, I, I want to say thank you for all of you. And I understand how it can be frustrating, but when we have a special city council meetings, it's a certain time period. And usually that's what we put in. I don't know about anybody else, but that's what I put in my calendar as well. And so when I have other commitments as well, I have to be able to get there too. So I just want to be able to make sure that you understand that. That's for specials. Now for the regular ones, we're here till almost midnight.
Sounds like you're going to schedule something.
Right, yeah. So you, we don't do it on those days, but for the specials, that's how it would be. And I guess my only, I wouldn't have a problem having a specific time, but I don't know whether we're going to have time to actually sit here and figure out the specific time. Because I actually had a hard stop at six thirty because this is what the staff had put on there for it to end. And I'm already ten minutes late and I just text them to let them know that I'm, I'm running behind. But I know I wouldn't have time to sit here and look through to figure out the dates between all five of us and then staff. So that's, but I don't have a problem getting a specific time.
Clarification. I, I mean on to the schedule, the regular.
Well, and I would just clarify.
Okay.
My concern is, is that we say it has to be done and then I, you know, Gino and I are sitting with the city manager to go over the agenda and they say, well, these items we have to touch. And now we've committed ourselves to end up having another long meeting, going late and potentially ending up in this situation again. As I shared with you when, when we chatted about this, I have every intention of wanting to move this forward. And for the record, I am holding off on any interviews for boards, commissions and committees until we have this discussion. So I know that we have seats that we have to fill. I'm eager to get this done just as much as you are. So let me work with staff on trying to have this conversation. And if maybe we have a an earlier than normal agenda review for that, that council meeting so that we can maybe give it a thumbs up. If we can make it work, I'm, I'm happy to do so. But I, I'd like to stick with the motion and table it so that we can.
Can you save us now with a date?
I certainly, I mean, one, one option, and I think I shared with council, we do, we can commit to the evening of six seventeen if that's council's desire. We also can keep it open if you prefer to wait until we've had a conversation with our city manager. But regardless, it's our intention to make sure we notify all the boards and commissioners. who are currently serving before any, when we do schedule it. So we'll be sure to note, make proper notification regardless of what date we schedule it for.
Well, I'd be for a friendly amendment to just reschedule it to June 17th and give it a try.
Let me, I'd like to stick with the motion if, if I, if I may. I'm just trying to figure, the public comment, I think, just added to the point that I was been making about this issue that we've been having with scheduling. So any other last-minute comments before we go ahead and call for the vote?
Yes. Frustrated, appreciative of all the letters, emails, and those that showed up tonight and waited. Thank you very much. I'm disappointed that we had such a jammed agenda tonight because about five days ago, I thought this was the only item that we were going to be taking up. Because the purpose was to allow for public engagement, and we knew that there was going to be a lot of people that want to talk. So I am in favor of setting the last Wednesday of every month as a hold that we schedule it. And we get the extra time to do what we need to do. And that can be a special meeting or a study session, and we can always cancel it as appropriate. But we used to do that, and I think we need to get back to that habit. Tonight is a Wednesday, it's the last Wednesday of the month, and I think that we should make that a steady and going forward. I am in favor of a date certain, so the folks can hear that, but it doesn't sound like that's the motion. So I look forward to the earliest, and I'm hoping it can be the 17th because it's the governance policy of this council that is important, and it needs to be updated. We're not talking about the boards and commissions makeup. We're talking about the selection, and that's the purpose of tonight's agenda item was to talk about the selection recommendations to the council and the governance policy. And there's other things on the governance policy. So if we can make the earliest date, and it's only that, and we allow at least three hours, I think we're going to be serving the public better.
And this, and that's exactly why I'm not comfortable in saying June 17th right now because I want to have a sit and make sure that we have enough time so we're not feeling crunched. That's, that's my point. And I, and I literally just articulated, I'm as eager about getting this done as others are. I'm holding, I'm not, I'm not doing any interviews, and we need to get these positions filled. So a couple of thoughts. I think it was, I think it was Lori. The public comments that were already provided, is it safe to assume that all the public comments that provided move forward with this item as we come back to it?
I would think so.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. If a public comment provided on this item, that will be continued, yes.
Yes, okay. So if you've already provided a public comment in writing, we have your public comment. It will be included as part of this item and on the city's website. There was something else, and I can't remember.
And those who want to speak on it, they spoke tonight on one minute, they can return the next time.
That's correct.
And they can speak again.
Yep.
And I want to make sure that we get them three minutes because it's important for them to have three minutes.
Yes, I sure did.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, I, all those opposed, motion passes unanimously. We have to take public comment on.
Wait, clerk's got a question.
I second. Yes. Thank you.
I mean, I'd take public comment on closed session agenda items, but do we I have to go myself. Do we have to get to this or can we wait till Tuesday? Can any of these wait till Tuesday?
It's a question for, we would like to at least take public comment. I think both of these items can wait till Tuesday next week. We'll have, we'll have four items on, this is the part of the challenge of agenda management.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
And can we still meet without?
How long, how long are we?
We think this item probably in total 20 minutes of closed session. In the meantime, though, we would, I think, whether we hear it or not, public comment on the closed session.
Which item do we have public comment?
We have public comment on the item number four. This is the crematorium.
Okay, so can we, I'm gonna, wait, I can't make a motion. My, I anticipate making a motion for whatever it's worth to table item three on closed session. And then let's go ahead and do number four. So go ahead and open up for public comment. If you have a public comment on either of those closed session items, three is closed session conference of real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956-TAC-8 for one old golf course road. And closed session item four is closed session conference of real property negotiators pursuant to government code section 54956-TAC-8 regarding the crematorium at El Encinal Cemetery. And with that, we're gonna open, just give me one second. We'll open up public comment period. For those that are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. While you're navigating your way there, I'll check in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on either of the closed session items? If you would, would be willing to stand up to the left of the podium or identify yourself by raising your hand. And if you're behind this gentleman and I cannot see you, okay, only one, only one public comment during the chamber. All right, go ahead and close public comment in the chamber. Anybody on Zoom, I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. There's no hands raised.
Hey, man, they say three times is a charm. This is my third time here to the mayor and his official staff. My name is Kevin, and I am the crematory operator at the Monterey Cemetery. Speaking on behalf of Keystone America Incorporated, a subsidiary of SCI Service Corporation International, we have two locations on the Monterey Peninsula, the Paul Mortuary in Pacific Grove and Bayside Community Mortuary in Seaside. We are the largest funeral service provider in the United States and Canada with over 2,000 locations. And the reason why I'm here today is to request an extension on a new lease for a minimum of 10 years. This would be a great investment for the city that would not cost the city one penny at all. A new crematory is much needed, and we have been operating the Monterey Crematory since 1998 for 27 years. The life expectancy for a brand-new crematory is 25 to 30 years, providing the proper and consistent maintenance are being performed, which is evident in our case. We at Keystone America Incorporated use a very reputable company, American Crematory Equipment, whom we use as a contractor to service all of our cremators on a regular basis, who has been in business for over 50 years. During their last visit, they discovered some issues with the crematory that needed attention. And the biggest one was the smoke that comes from the crematory. And we know all, know about them phone calls, 911 calls that the fire department have been receiving on a regular basis, and among other repair pairs, some that I perform myself. For example, since I've been a crematory operator since August of this year, I have patched the floor, the retort floor, four times. The cost to repair would be an exuberant amount of money, which is why I am here today. Our company is willing to purchase a new crematory as well as a new stack and chimney, which will require some restructuring of the roof, which is a whole other cost aside from the crematory being in the price range of $200,000. That's what we're willing to pay. We at Keystone will be purchasing and having it installed, which will be a much more environmentally friendly one than the current one that we have right now. Want to thank you. And one more note, given the opportunity, and I spoke with the chief about this. Anywhere I travel throughout this land, one thing that we offer at SCI for police officers and fire department, and this is no way for you to sway your decision because this is something we have done for many years and will continue to do so. When a police officer and a fire department employee dies in the line of duty, we offer free service, funeral service for that particular individual. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the staff.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we'll be voting tonight on this as well.
We will, we will potentially be voting on it in closed session.
Okay, and would I be, would I be able to hear that?
We will be reporting, there's a report out afterwards, but.
Okay.
We'll let you know.
I could stand by it then.
So closed session.
I think. Yeah, if you wait, if you want to wait outside, and then we can, somebody can come out and let you know. Staff told me 20 minutes, I'm thinking 10 minutes. That's my expectation because I gotta go. Thank you, thank you. And thank you for, I just have to say, thank you for that gesture that you do with your business for our peace officers and firefighters. That's, I, that's very commendable, and I appreciate your efforts there. All right, with that, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everybody. And if you all could just move out of the chamber as quickly as possible here so we can go into closed session.